Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular June 9, 2025, meeting of the Birmingham City Commission here in the Municipal Building at 151 Martin. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bingham, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Treaslon?
Here.
Mayor Proton Baller?
Here.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Hofs?
Here.
Commissioner Law?
Here.
Thank you. We now move to Proclamations, Congratulatory Resolutions, Awards, Appointments, Resignations, and Confirmations, Administration of Oaths, and Introduction of Guests and Announcements. As an announcement, we have a guest this evening, Oakland County Commissioner for District 19, Mr. Charles Cavell.
Hey there. Good evening, Council and residents. Just want to give you a quick little update, but before I do that, I just wanted to say, one, Alex was very good and communicative, so you have a good clerk, just in helping me get here. And then, two, Jan has been very communicative and good when talking about equalization, which I'm happy to take questions about because I think that's on the agenda tonight. Just thought the timing would be useful for you all. And then, third, when I was driving up here, because I live in Ferndale, there was a cop who pulled over to help with the traffic cone, something got run over, so he was like being really nice, like it wasn't part of his job, but he was just fixing a traffic cone that got messed up. You guys are doing a good, like, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody's doing great, it seems. So, I can give some county updates, and again, if you have questions about equalization, I'd like to talk about that, just so that, basically, from the county, I can say, we'd love to mend the relationship, because I know the cost increase was high and sudden. So I just want to make sure we're good.
All right. Updates, please.
Okay, updates, you got it. So, a couple of big things that have been happening is, as relates to the county's 5,000 employees, we're going to be doing a new five-year health plan, which will ultimately save us about $12 million, which is very cool, so we'll be saving taxpayers' money. And, we're adding a $0 plan, so you don't have to pay a monthly co-pay, and it's a high deductible, but the way we worked it out is that if you reach your deductible, the county will cover your deductible, so there is a way, if you work for Oakland County as a public servant, to then be able to not have to pay for a health plan every month. So it's, I know some of you are interested in that.
Do you have applications?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So, that's just a really cool thing we're rolling out, a really nice benefit. Another thing is, this is, just an FYI, because I think more of this will be coming, is, as a part of the Finance Committee, we've been getting reports on how our federal grants are doing. So Oakland County used to get 197 federal or state federal pass-through grants, and we've had, so far, three of them cut, and so that'll be a $4 million hit to our budget, and we've had to lay off a few people. Those are likely to increase over time, we're thinking, so we're trying to prepare for that, but just, you know, some of that also comes to the city of Birmingham in the form of all sorts of different things: public health, safety, parks, all that. Yeah, those are the two big things I want to give you an update about. Anything I can do for y'all?
Well, if those are your updates, do you want to explain the process that was used to update the charges for equalization, the rationale? And then, as a second part, there was an article that said that Oakland County is making changes across the board to stop subsidizing the communities, and I thought that was an interesting choice of words, hopefully not Oakland County's word, but just the whole rationale and what, where other things might be coming.
Yeah, so I think, first, to your first question, what was the rationale for the equalization changeover? We would call it a subsidy, but I think because our goal as government, whether it's the city or the county, is to try and provide a good service that people broadly find essential or useful, and then we figure out how to pay for it together, right? Residents should just have a good service, we work together to figure out how to pay for it. So, with equalization, that office costs about $6 million and has 38 employees, and so, over the last, since 1971, Oakland County has paid for, has paid for $3 million-ish of that $6 million office total, and then over time, equalization rates for communities like yours and the 31 other communities that use our equalization services have gone up. So we brought in $4 million-ish in revenue from equalization for equalization at a cost of $6 million. So that $2 million delta, which, again, we've been doing this service since 1971, had been covered just through general property taxes, which, to your point, Mayor, about subsidy, you know, it's not really subsidy, because you all pay property taxes, so it's just different government service. But anyways, some people thought we should just fill that $2 million gap immediately instead of over time, and, just so you know, I voted against it and tried really hard to not have them do that, but they're going to now close that gap with your pay.
So are you aware of the, what are we calling it, a proclamation, a, and how do you think that would be, have other communities submitted those, and how do you think that would be received?
Yes, other communities have submitted those, proclamation condemning this hike.
Resolution, yeah.
Resolution.
Yes.
I mean, you've got to represent your people, right? If, not to sound rude or anything, but like, it is not in your self-interest to carry water on this for our shared residents, so like, you know, I mean, just, I don't know offhand the Birmingham increase, but like, in other communities, it's $100,000. That's a cop with benefits, right? A car at Oakland County, at least a Chevy Tahoe's 55K plus $22,000 for kit, like, if your increase is $72,000, that's also a cop car, right? Like, the, you know, these are things that you have to weigh, so I say, you have to represent your people the best you can, which I think means condemn it, because it did seem sudden, and it did seem non-communicated, and it does seem not necessary.
The increase for us in year one, for fiscal year 2026, is $110,625.
Yeah, that's, that's, right, that's, you know, just look at another line.
Forty percent.
Yeah, and that's, that $110,000 isn't just sitting there, right? That's used for a parks program, or a police officer, or a something, so I, yeah, you've got to do it.
All right, and any idea what they meant about the other services that they're looking at?
Yeah, yeah. So I think some of this has been conflated. So we, in December, stopped the subsidy, what we would call a subsidy, for the sheriff's contracts, because Oakland County does policing for 12 other communities. I think there's a difference between that, what we would call a subsidy, and this, because, one, this is like a very core function of county government, and if you know the history of how the equalization came to be, you understand that this is something that, like, having a government service do this without a profit motive behooves us to create and effect good government, whereas the county sheriff adding responsibilities by being the police for other communities is not a core function of a county sheriff.
Right.
So those, I think there's that difference, and then there's also just the dollars and cents difference. This comes out of your general fund, which goes to all sorts of things. The, for example, the law enforcement contracts come from dedicated millages that all these other communities have decided to tax themselves more to pay more for police, and when we did the analysis, they all had millions of dollars saved up to be able to pay more for more policing from Oakland County. So I think it hits different, right? $110,000 means you've got to find that somewhere in your general budget in the middle of your year, whereas, you know, so I think that subsidy framing is, I don't know, it just, it doesn't feel collaborative. I don't like it, so I keep voting no on these things. So, yeah.
Well, the issue for us, I think, is why Oakland County feels like the communities should cover 100% of the costs, when Oakland County, the act of assessing accurately, yes, Commissioner Baller's brought that up, so, homes to collect taxes, we're collecting them on your behalf, because you're getting 28 cents of every dollar that we bring in. So it seems like Oakland County should absorb 28% of the overhead or something, then, not offshore, 100% of it to all the communities, because they earn revenue on that process, so.
Totally, yes.
Do any commissioners have any questions, or Commissioner Hofs?
Yeah, Charlie, you mentioned that we've only had three federal grants in the last four months taken out. I mean, is there a crystal ball on this?
Well, yeah. I will say, so Medicaid, that being something that's passed the House, the Medicaid cuts, and the SNAP cuts, Oakland County, two things, Oakland County's Health Department, Oakland County's Housing Department, so, and OCHN, so three things. Oakland County's Health Department is funded through a federal, 66% federal grant with a 33% county match, so that, I think it's 40-ish, 50-ish, $1 million, two-thirds federal, one-third state. A lot of that federal money comes from, in the form of, like, our behavioral health clinic work that we do, Medicaid reimbursement. A lot of that comes from DHHS at the federal level, which is also being targeted in the budget cuts, and so then the county will have to either fill that gap or lay people off. That's how, health. Housing is 100%, it's $16 million funded, the housing department will be 100, and that's, you know, that's impacted here in Birmingham, Baldwin House, right? That's been something that the housing department has worked with. So $16 million from the housing department, that's the entire budget, that's fully and totally 100% funded by HUD, which is facing like a 30% cut in the budget, so that, you know, if we don't find a couple million extra dollars the next day, there's going to be hard conversations. Third is OCHN, the Community Mental Health Network, which is $500 million, which, since Medicaid redetermination back a year ago with the COVID, also had, and then of, just that Medicaid redetermination from the, when COVID was happening, more people got more Medicaid eligibility, that was cut. So that was a 10%-ish cut to OCHN, so it was about a $50 million cut, and then, again, OCHN is 90% funded through Medicaid, and, you know, OCHN is the mental health source for service in Oakland County, right? It serves 29,000 people a year, one in five people in America have mental health. Those that have acute mental health crises go through the public mental health system, right? There's, in effect, not a private, like, marketplace for public, for mental health. So it is covered by public mental health services in Oakland County, 90% of that is Medicaid-funded. So with a 30% cut to OCHN, it's $150 million, like, in a month, like, you know, if they pass it next month.
Right, and some grants have been rescinded.
Yep.
But most federal grants have renewal dates of October 1st, and if they are not renewed, we won't know that until September 30th, probably.
Yep, to that, we actually had a grant that was a continuance, it was for communicable disease prevention with the Public Health Department. We had to lay off six people the day this happened, because April 1st, we got a letter from the state that the federal government did not renew this, you know, federal to state to county, did not renew that grant. So then, that was April 1st at 5:03, and they were saying effective today, April 1st. So April 2nd, we had a committee meeting, you know, for public health, and they were like, yeah, we had to call people at 8:00 AM, and now we're here at the 10:00 AM meeting. So, right, this is, and I'm just saying this to lift up, like, this is the beginning, I think, to what you're all intimating, so like, it's real, and it's going to be real.
Commissioner Emmerich, or Commissioner Shaver? No, you started off like a ray of sunshine.
I was trying to, yeah.
I'll go to Commissioner Hay.
Yeah, hi, Charlie. Back to the assessing one, where you talked about the $6 million, but there was only $4 million that was funded, and in our case, it's 28 cents on every dollar. The way that presents itself is that the costs have spiraled far greater than the appreciation of property values, because it's 28 cents on every dollar, but our tax revenue increases every year, so you're getting more dollars at 28 cents, and if you're still 50% behind, what's going on? Because that, coming back to one of my previous jobs, that's just like, time to get the big knife out, because this cost-cutting needs to happen, because the cost is out of control. We've been, I mean, I forget what our tax revenue increases on average each year, I know the headly cap is not actually a factor, because we've had so many new properties built, and therefore it uncaps every time, and it's.
Seven percent, I think it was last year.
Yeah, so if we're getting 7% greater income year over year, inflation historically was sub 3%, where did the difference go that you're still underwater by 50% of the cost? And I look at you and say, you, where is the county underwater? Where's the efficiency here? Because right now, it's more a case of, oh, I'm inefficient, give me money. That's how it feels, and it's a really bad feeling.
Yeah.
And, so I would say, from my side, the quest, the request I have to you to take back to the county is, show us the pathway, show us where the savings are, not just sit there and go, oh, take the easy pathway, cut heads. That's not always actually the right answer, it's not always the worst answer you can do. There are other ways of saving costs. Where are the inefficiencies? Where are the costs? And show it, show us, show all the communities, because that hasn't been demonstrated, kind of to your point of it was just throw it over the fence and hope somebody catches it. Ask them to come back with that, because it's really important. If it's real, it's real, but we've done this before, we've asked this question before, and we have seen, and I'll say in the case of the 40th District Court, they have shown us ideas where they've been able to control cost creep. Okay, Oakland County, now it's your turn. The checkbook is closed, it's not open, it's certainly not blank, so come back with some ideas, please, and we would love to discuss in our petness a couple of dozen other communities that will be on board with, let's see what we can do as a collective brain trust.
Understood.
Right, and if communities move away from using Oakland County for equalization, then the cost burden, which people are looking at, the cost burden for the remaining communities is going to be even higher, so it's self-defeating and shortsighted.
That was my last, that was my point, you just made nicely put.
Commissioner, Mayor Proton Baller?
Yeah, I have a few questions, so I'm looking for really short answers, maybe you can answer the first one. Is this function that they are providing to us something that counties all across the country do, or is this sort of a unique to Oakland County that they provide?
No, many counties do provide it, those services, yes.
Okay, okay. So, when she asked you about the process that you came, I didn't, I wasn't really nourished by your answer.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Whose idea was this?
Yeah, okay, so, real talk, got it. From my perspective on the commission, when I first heard about this was, the CFO said this is our plan, and, to be honest, I had also heard from other people at the county who lifted up that, so, when you talk about inefficiencies and all that, there was.
I'm sorry.
All right, whatever you want.
Quick answer.
Yeah.
Whose idea was this?
I think the CFO.
The CFO, what's that person's name?
Oakland County. Brian Luffler.
And he works for the Oakland County Executive, correct?
Yep.
Who must have bought into this, right?
Yep.
Okay, good, that's question number one.
Yeah.
Question number two, let me, I want to be clear here, we collect a dollar, 34 cents comes to us, 28 cents goes to the county, 22 cents goes to Birmingham Public Schools, and 16 cents goes to the state of Michigan, but you're asking the city of Birmingham to pay 100% of the cost of the equalization assessment function for that, correct?
Yep.
Okay, good. What was the vote? And was it along party lines?
No, it was a 9-10 vote against, I got one, I got, I got two people to flip with me, guys, I was really trying for us, and then we recalled the vote, or we at-eased or whatever, not to give you guys any ideas.
Wait, nine, it was 10 votes against and 9-4?
Yep.
So it lost?
So there were two votes, yep, so don't get any ideas, because I know the mayor runs a tight ship, but apparently you can go at ease, make a motion to reconsider before the next agenda item, get someone to flip their vote, and then flip it to be 10-9.
But it was not along party lines?
No, I voted against it.
And what were the, let's say, the three top reasons that people thought this was a good idea?
Good idea? I don't know, I didn't think it was a good idea, so I can't tell you that.
And they didn't, nobody in the discussion and deliberation, there was no expression of why the county should do this, and, or what?
Other than, the cost is the cost, the math is the math, and we don't want to subsidize our partner communities.
Wait, I think we're subsidizing you now.
I agree, that's why I voted no. I'm with you.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one follow-up question. If we want to go and look and see who voted for what, where can we go to do that?
Oakland County Board of Commissioners has Meeting Resources on its page, you can also call or email or text me, but.
No, I'm looking, I'm asking for the public, I know where to go, I'm asking for the public.
Oh, yeah, so Oakland County, oakgov.com, and then click on Board of Commissioners, or just Google Oakland County Board of Commissioners, look at Meeting Resources, and this was the, two board meetings ago, so like, the May 14th County Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cavell.
Thanks, Charlie.
We appreciate your representation of District 19. All right, now we move to appointments. We have an opening on the Public Arts Board. We have one position open as a regular member to serve a three-year, remainder of a three-year term expiring January 28, 2028, and one position to serve as an alternate member of the Public Arts Board to serve the remainder of a three-year term, also expiring January 28, 2028, and we have one applicant, Ms. Leah Jamerson, if you'd like to come up and give your name and address, and tell us why you are interested in serving.
Hi there, my name is Leah Jamerson, my address is 891 Henrietta, Birmingham, Michigan, and I'm interested in serving, because I've been a longtime Birmingham resident, my family moved here in 1992, and I attended Harlan Elementary School, Derby Middle School, and graduated from Seehome in 2008. I served on the Birmingham Principal Shopping District as a senior at Seehome, and now that my career is a little more stable, I have more free time, I really do appreciate the opportunity to circle back and to be able to serve on this city again. I currently work as a licensed and board-certified mental health counselor, and I'm also the CEO of my own solo private practice, Day Spring Vision Counseling in Troy, Michigan, and with my mental health background, I think I'd be a great asset. I know that in the mission statement, the Public Arts Board refers to prioritizing cultural heritage for the city, diverse and stimulating cultural environment, enriching the lives of the residents, and also expression through the display of public art. So I think I could be an asset, just having bearing perspectives of being a child raised in the community, a teenager raised in the community, and now an adult living in the community. As far as diversity, I have an immense amount of travel experience, I've gone to five different continents, 13 different countries, and aside from being raised here, I did live for almost seven years on the beautiful island of Oahu, that's where I attended college and got my bachelor's in psychology and minored in chemistry, and then couldn't get enough of the island, I ended up staying for grad school, and got my master's in clinical mental health counseling before my parents had me come back home, so they wouldn't have to fly 10 hours to see me again. So, being able to have the gift of travel, living different places, being around different people, being a neighbor to the residents, being a resident myself, I have a good idea of what would help to bring the community together, what the needs of the community are, and in addition to the people already serving on the board, I think I'd be a wonderful team member in addition.
Thank you. Commissioner Hofs, question?
First off, thank you. You haven't left any gaps in anything, other than if Lou Lou thinks this is okay.
She definitely thinks this is okay, and she loves the city as much as I do, especially Shane Park, Barnum Park, and going to the farmer's markets. And I'm a bit of a visual storyteller, that's why I thought it'd be nice to make the PowerPoint for you all.
Okay, and my real question is, how did you get involved with the FJC, and, you know, the Founder's Junior Council?
That's a great question. I've always gone to the Detroit Institute of Arts. I know that one of the current serving members actually worked for them for a long time, coming back from Italy to Michigan to work in restoring art, so I think that's fantastic. I love going to the museum, that's one of my favorite things to do in my downtime, is explore art. We have some really cool art museums here in Birmingham, and when I looked into more about membership at the DIA after moving back home, that's when I learned about the subcategories and subgroups of memberships, and found that, about the Founder's Junior Council, where it can encourage younger generation to be involved in the arts.
Any other questions?
I just had one quick question. You just gave your address, and it's different than the one you gave on your application?
That is my old address.
Okay, you moved.
So I, I did move, well, not on my own accord, I was living on Townsend Street, and if you see, there's a big hole there right now, so I was there for almost two years, and then it got bought out. So I just moved one street over.
Okay, fair enough. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. If there's no further questions, would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Baller?
I would be delighted to nominate Leah Jamerson as a regular member to the Public Arts Board to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire January 28, 2028.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and Ms. Bingham is going to swear you in right at this moment.
Thank you. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state and the government, and the integrity and honesty of the administration of the affairs, where we are free from partisan distinction or control, and perform the duties of Office of Public Arts Board according to the best of my ability. I do.
All right, now we move to open to the public for matters not on the agenda. If you are in the room and you'd like to make a comment, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please hold your remarks to three minutes, and please hold your comments to items that are not on this evening's agenda.
Hi, good evening, David Bloom, I live on Wallace Street. On Memorial Day Monday, after waking up, beautiful day, I remembered about the annual service or ceremony that we hold at Shane Park, and I was wondering what time it started, so I went to the city website and looked on the calendar, and there was nothing there. So after getting dressed and walking my dog, I said, let's just walk over to the park and see what's going on. So I get to the park, and there's a service, but it's a lot smaller than usual. There were two city commissioners there. The crowd was apparently, to me, significantly smaller. The band looked a little smaller, too. I didn't see a 21-gun salute there, maybe that happened before I got there. For me, this is one of the most important civic activities, community activities, we have in this city. It's in central, it's in Shane Park, central downtown, there's no merchandising, no one's selling anything, it's not commercial, it's about our heritage. The only other comparable ceremony I'm aware of in the area is what they hold at the cemetery in Franklin, and it just seemed like it was deteriorating. So, and it's really important that we continue to honor the people that have sacrificed for our benefit to be here and living in freedom. And so I'm wondering if not having this on the calendar contributed at all to the lack of participation and attendance. I don't know if that's true or not, it just seemed to me, maybe it was more than a coincidence. I also, a friend also told me that, the gentleman that organizes this every year has announced that he's going to be retiring, so if that's the case, we have a year to plan, and make sure we get it on the calendar next year, and we can continue this wonderful tradition that we have in our community, that's very important to have. So that was my comment about Memorial Day. After hearing our Oakland County rep speak and the issue. After hearing our Oakland County rep speak and the issue of the equalization, I don't know how many of you remember, there is a member of our community, Cindy Rose, that ended up doing a lot of research based on things that were going on and issues that were being brought forward to the President's Council about people's property taxes. And she did a ton of research and uncovered issues with how taxes were being assessed in our community, because there was an office right down the hall that was doing that. And so after that happened, the city decided to move over to Oakland County, and I believe people have been reasonably happy with that. As you are, I'm not real happy with us paying for subsidizing what's going on. So as you look into this, and it seems like there might be an interest in going back to what we were doing, we need to be careful that we don't go down the same rabbit hole we were before. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the room who'd like to make a public comment for an item not on the agenda? Or if you're online and would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and approved by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless this commissioner or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered under the last item of new business. Would any commissioners like to withdraw any items? Mr. Hague.
Kilo M. Mother N. November.
M. K. M. N.
No.
Mayor Portemballer.
F. And J.
F. And J. Any other commissioners wish to withdraw an item? Does any member of the public wish to withdraw an item from the consent agenda, either in the room or online, using the raise your hand function? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move the consent agenda with the exception of items F, J, K, M, and N.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments on the motion? Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Mayor Portemballer?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and would the commissioner like to address these items now? All right, we'll do them in alpha order, so that's Mayor Portemballer. We'll start with you with item F.
I thought that was, so item F, for the public's information, is a motion to approve the consolidation of our nine voting precincts into five, which I thought was significant enough to, for several reasons. I'd say several, and raise two fingers. Number one, we all vote, but there were a couple of things in there. The new boundaries will be on the city website, so almost a lot of people are going to be voting in different places, correct? Okay. So for example, I used to vote at the Presbyterian Church, and now I'm going to be voting, golly, I forget where. Anyway, I looked it up somewhere else.
Midvale School.
Midvale School, right. So people should know that. And the other thing that was very interesting to me was the very abrupt reversal in the number of people who vote in person versus some other way that's not in person. And it's huge. I don't have the item right in front of me, but it's something like 60%, 60, 30, 60, 40. Used to be in person, and 40% was-ish, and now it's 60% votes absentee or early, and the smaller percent. But this is also, there's three things. This is going to save us a bunch of money, right?
$160,000.
Yeah, so.
That's estimated based on the equipment prices for future equipment.
And that's per year? Per year or per election?
So there's going to be one big equipment purchase, so that's going to be the one big purchase where we would save that big chunk of money, but then the annual maintenance for it as well. But to kind of, yes, we will reduce some of our election inspector staff, but they are also very much due for a raise based on the averages across the county. So election inspectors, there will be less of them, getting paid more money, staying within the approved budget for election inspector pay. But we are going to save a lot of money on equipment. We're going to save, you know, time and effort with DPS helping me set up and break down precincts. So there is a huge savings and efficiency in this proposal.
Good. And for those of you watching on Zoom or TV, that was Alexandria Bingham, our city clerk. One other question, but now I forgot what it was. Never mind.
And I'll add in to say that I had a conversation to ask about how it affects house districts, because for example, we have, Natalie Price has seven of the nine precincts, and Samantha Stekloff has one, and I'm afraid Sharon McDonald has one. And so those don't change at all. If you go to a precinct that now includes what used to be more than one old precinct, you will get the appropriate ballot based on your street address, and you will still vote for the people until the census redraws those lines. Our Senate has already, Senate boundary has already changed, and so all of Birmingham will be in one Senate district for the next election. So there seem to be no downsides to this, so.
My other question or comment, what about volunteers? You have a lot of volunteers.
They're not volunteers. We have to pay election inspectors. There's also that obligation that they are going to do the proper work for us.
And take the training.
But we need fewer now.
We need less, but we're going to keep all of our best, obviously, and they'll get paid a little more.
I have two questions. One is, do voter registration cards have to get reprinted?
Yes, and they already have two because of that redistricting change. So this is two birds, one stone. They're going to get that redistricting change and their new precinct assignments if they have a new precinct assignment, all in the same mailing.
Who prints that?
We download the list from a state website, the Qualified Voter File. We send it to one of our printing vendors that can do it more efficiently and cheaply than we could if we did it in-house.
And if this gets approved, when would that happen? When would people get their new cards?
Probably this summer. So I would hope for in August, probably. I have to make sure the changes go through on the state website so that I can pull and check a perfect, clean list before I send it to the printer.
Okay, and this would be, assuming it's approved, effective for the November vote?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right.
I'll move the suggested resolution.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor of item F? Any opposed?
Should that have been a roll call?
Since it's pulled out separately and it's not financial?
Saves money, it doesn't cost money.
It's fine, right. All right. Commissioner Baller, item J.
Well, we've been talking a lot about water and sewer rates, costs, fees, et cetera. So I thought a mini presentation on this one might make sense. No?
Okay.
I mean, if no one else is interested, I can do it offline. We're going, this is, I'll ask a couple of questions. This is something we haven't done in some time, correct?
Haven't done it in some time, and with the way that.
Maybe we should introduce to the public what it is?
She can probably speak better on it than me. So this is regarding a 2025 water and sewer rate and connection fee study that we're looking to do, where we put out an RFP to have firms come in and bid on this, so they would study what our existing rates are, what our existing infrastructure situation is, what our future needs would be, how we could adjust our rates to cover all of our needs and make the whole system self-sufficient, self-funded in the future.
Melissa?
That seems, may I address or question what you just said? That seems to be much broader than what I read today. What you just described, what I read was about rates. Now, I did not read every word, okay? So, you know, you can't read the whole packet.
If you go to the scope of work in the RFP, it goes through and lists all of the things that we are asking these firms to do.
What page might that be?
Well, it's in 5J. Basically, meet with the city staff to discuss and understand the city's goals for the rate study and concerns regarding water and sewer rates, review current water and sewer rate model, existing rate methodology and connection fees, review of historical water and sewer demand and build customer use, review and analysis of water and sewer funds' financial history, such as audit reports, review of current year's water and sewer fund projection, review of future capital expenditures and capital improvement program, effects on proposed rates, and recommendations for funding. And I don't know if you want me to go on, but basically there's 12 or 13 different lists that go through. And basically, what we want to do is develop a financial projection and impacts of any rate recommendations, and look at what we want to do here moving forward. Melissa, did you want to add anything?
Was that?
I mean, it seems like a significant project. Not sure why it was on the consent agenda, but.
Well.
And when you put something on the consent agenda, it has the sense like, okay, do I really need to dig into this? And, you know, there's only so much time we have to devote to our job. I think had it not been on the consent agenda, I probably would have given it more, more time, more study. I think it's a very important thing that we need to do. And I don't know if my question is legitimate or not, that whether the scope of it is sufficient and whether it is appropriately integrated with all of our other concerns about infrastructure, because you're talking strictly water and sewer. Streets aren't part of it, right?
Ms. Ecker?
Correct. Streets aren't part of it because of water and sewer, they have a fund, and they're based on the rate structure. They're a little bit different. I would also state that this is on consent because this is to go out and do the work, to do the analysis, and have a consultant prepare all of the information and present it to you at a later date. So it's not actually going to change anything, but it's going to be used as future discussion and study for anything, decisions you might make in the future.
So the consultant that you're recommending, which is Hubble, Roth, and Clark, correct?
Correct.
And do they have the wherewithal, the ability to broaden the scope, let's say, if at some point we decide that we want them to look at some other things like streets?
Well, I'll say two things. One, there were two people that bid on this. Hubble, Roth, and Clark has the capacity to definitely do this study and has done it in many other communities in the metro area. Two, could they change the scope unilaterally in the middle of the project? No.
No, not them. If we asked them.
If we asked them, we, first of all, already have Hubble, Roth, and Clark under a professional services contract, and this is for a specific project. Could we amend the scope? Yes, but it would have to come back to you for an addendum to the contract.
Of course. We would be the ones, I assume, asking that it be amended.
Correct.
If you were to say, if someone were to ask, well, I'll just ask, should we not be, when was the last time we looked at our streets and rated them? I have a spreadsheet.
Streets? We do it every year.
Every year. So the spreadsheet that I have that was like back in, I don't know, 2020 or 2020, that's updated every year. Do you pay their ratings?
We look at, for the budget, when Melissa fills out, figures out what her schedule is going to be for the capital improvement plan and which areas need to rise to the top for streets. As you know, we look at three things. We look at the pavement surface, we look at the water infrastructure underneath, and the sewer infrastructure underneath. And if all things, those three things add up, then they're at the top of the priority list. Then there's many other factors that we look at, bunching them together in certain areas to get efficiencies, et cetera.
I understand that. My question is about the rating of the streets.
Every year when we, the rating of the streets, well, we do it every year. They're always on the roads, they're always looking at the conditions, and we update it every year when we update the capital improvement plan as part of the budget process.
So that's, and I'm sorry if I'm straying a little bit here, but we probably have plenty of time tonight. That's a methodical rating on the streets?
Yes.
Somebody's out there driving every street saying it was rated a seven or a six last year, and I think it's now a seven. They scratch out six and write seven.
They're all evaluated, yes.
Okay.
Would you care to make this the suggested resolution?
Sure. I will make the suggested resolution.
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote, please. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Mayor Portemballer?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Trish Ball?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Hague, item K.
Okay, Melissa would be you again. All right, the first one is actually just semantics. On the first page of the article, 5K, second paragraph in background, 380 cubic feet is really different from 380 cubic yards, like nine times different.
Yes.
So just semantics, that the wording's not right there.
Twenty-seven times different.
Oh, beg your pardon. I'm thinking of. I still work in meters. I can't figure this stuff out.
It's a cube, it's not a square.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so there was that. And then the only other thing was, did anybody really ask why the bids came in so vastly different from lowest to highest? I mean, the highest is like 15 times greater in value.
Eighteen.
And the second highest is still almost five times, four and a half times greater. What's going on?
So we had our engineering consultants do the reference on the two lowest bidders, but yes, you are correct that the highest bidder was about 15 times the cost of the lowest bidder.
And what was the general consensus as to why we have a huge outlier and then another pretty big outlier?
The city is unaware of how sometimes contractors bid on items, so we weren't sure why that one was 15 times the amount, essentially the fourth bidder.
Can always ask.
Yeah.
It's going to be a no, but you can always ask.
Yeah, you can ask anything.
So perhaps the more important question is, is this within what would be expected compared to what we paid for this last time?
Actually, that was going to be one of my next points, and it's going to be a point I'm going to bring up a lot in the future. I actually don't care what we paid last time, because there is a Birmingham premium. I care about what Warren or Sinclair Shores or Ypsilanti paid last time for every activity that we go out for. We do not benchmark properly. We just look at what the last quote was that we got and said, oh, it's in scale, there's an inflation adjustment. I've never seen a comparison yet that comes back with something within the tri-county area. Now, if you do it, great. We haven't seen it, because I really doubt Ypsilanti gets the Birmingham premium for whatever the activity is, or Warren, or Royal Oak, or these others. That's the benchmarking we need to be doing on every single cost from this point forwards, because I think some of the recent quotes we've had for various activities have been so astronomical, it's made everybody's hair look like mine, and we don't want that. So I would like to see a benchmarking activity that does more than just look at previous, what did Birmingham get? Because I truly don't care. I don't think it's a relevant number anymore.
And with that information, since this is dredging part of Corton Lake, it's a small quantity, it's an annual contract, we may not have comparable quotes in other communities just because of size and the scale and the duration of it. Other projects, we may be able to look at other communities if it's a similar size and scale, scope of a project. But for this one, for dredging, a lot of times.
I'm not worried about this one.
This one, a lot of times with dredging projects.
The number's not stressing me out. I'm actually surprised it's at 110, to be honest with you, for five years of activity. If they're signing up for it, great, as long as they're good, I'm fine with that. I was using this as the lead-in to other projects, thinking of one very recent one, which had an awful lot of debate. That's all. It was just the lead-in. Thank you very much.
All right. You had any comment, Mayor Trish?
Well, I agree with that guy. There is a, I mean, anybody who lives in Birmingham and gets service for anything knows.
Right. You had a comment, Mayor Proton?
Well, I agree with that guy. There is a, I mean, anybody who lives in Birmingham and gets service for anything knows that they're paying more than the guy in Troy every day of the week. I'm concerned or curious about the impact on the residents adjacent and around and driving past. I recall the last time this was done, there was a lot of equipment out, even left for years, right? In that, there's that space, it's mentioned here, north of sort of a staging area off the bridge, north and west.
Oh, yeah, north portion of...
Yeah, so what are the... We also have a vocal resident at the corner of Oak and Lakeside who didn't like the view of a porta potty screened by Barbara Brady. I wonder what he's going to think when the dredgers show up, because I don't think he was there the last time around.
Yep. So with that, in the previous years, the staging area was built with the grass pavers and everything else on Oak Street, kind of the north corner of it, north of the bridge. So that will be the access point from the contractor to be able to get down to the river, to be able to do the dredging. So you will see the equipment material in that location. They will go further south on, in the Ridge River, past Oak, so past the existing bridge. But most of the construction activity, equipment and storage is going to happen in that CG area on Oak Street, north of the, north of Oaks Bridge.
So not much in the lake proper?
There will be lake proper, just to be able to get the sediment down from the bottom of the river, transported over to the staging area with that. So you'll see equipment within the river itself and solar ocean measures to make sure no sediment travels downstream within the lake anymore, type of a deal. So you will see equipment and also solar ocean measures out there.
But most of the dredging is in the river north, north of Oak?
Yes. And part of it will come a little bit towards the south portion of, south of Oak slightly, but mostly in that location is where the sediment is, because previously what we call is pools, deeper sections of it, that's where most of the sediment has been collected at to try to stop it continuing going downstream further into the lake itself.
Can I ask whether we intend to or how we intend to notify residents in that area that this is occurring and the duration of the project?
So yeah, similarly to any other engineering projects, we will do it where we mail letters out to the residents prior beforehand. We'll probably also pass out flyers too, to be able to be attached to their doorknobs on the front door, type of a thing. And then with that too, we will send information with our communications department to send information out to social media also, to be able to get residents notified that way.
Thank you.
If you want to talk about unhappy residents, don't dredge that for two years. What you're going to have there, I used the word muck, so it's a necessary process for that. I've lived here for 30 years, and I know the years when they haven't done it, or it wasn't done well, and it was not pleasant, and the smell wasn't pleasant here.
All right. Mayor Tom Baller, or, excuse me, Commissioner Haig, did you want to move the suggested resolution?
I will move the suggested resolution as written. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion? Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Haig?
Yes.
Mayor Theresa Long?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hopez?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Haig, item M.
Okay. This one's just wording. I don't like the way it's written here. Resolution to set a public hearing date of July 14th to consider the special land use permit and final site plan and design review application for 479 South Old Woodward to permit the modification of the approved floor plans and the issuance of a waiver for 49 blah, blah, blah. I don't like saying to permit the modification. I would like to see something like review the modification of the approved floor plans for the issuance of a waiver, because this sort of implies a predetermined decision with how I read it as a layman. The title of how it's shown in the memorandum is actually a little bit better because it's so much shorter. It just says, set public hearing for 479 South Old Woodward, Birmingham Tower, special land use permit, final site plan and design review. It gives no indication, it's just a statement of task.
That's a fair point.
Right. The description is what the suggested commission action would be, should we support it. So, and unless there's a requirement for that in the public noticing, point taken.
So I don't know how we would want to adjust that. I'd look to you, Mary, for a suggestion on a modification or wording that would be better.
I think you just said it, yeah.
Make the motion the way that you just stated, and then if you have support, that's the way that it will be.
Just read the words that I am...
Yes, because you changed the word permit to review.
All right. I would like to make a motion for item 5M with the revised wording of, resolution to set a public hearing date of July the 14th, 2025, to consider the special land use permit and final site plan and design review application for 479 South Old Woodward to review the modification of the approved site, approved floor plans for the issuance of a waiver for 49 off-street parking spaces pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.04, parentheses D, parentheses 3, parentheses A of the zoning ordinance. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion? Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baller?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Haig?
Yes.
Mayor Theresa Long?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Haig, item N.
This one was just, maybe it's being a little bit obnoxious minded, but it was just because of the cost participation agreement for a downtown road that is a public road, and we had a lot of discussion recently about Wimbledon and looking for support from the state on other projects. So it was just trying to make in the point that assistance is there if we try looking hard enough and petition hard enough, that we need to be doing this a little bit more to try and mitigate residential impact. And I'm very pleased to see that we did get something, because it's 70, was it $72,000? It helps. It'd be nice to do that for residential streets as well, especially ones like Wimbledon that are major. It just helps. That's all. It was just an observation. So a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion? Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Haig?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hopez?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. There is no city manager's report this evening. We have no unfinished business, so we move to new business. Our first item of new business is a public hearing for 280 East Lincoln Grace Baptist Church, special land use permit amendment, final site plan and design review. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and we will have the presentation by staff.
Great. I'm Lea Bozinski, city planner, and you can find the plans for this project on page 518 of the packet. And I'm just going to pull up one of the elevations real quick that I think is a nice visual. Okay. So Grace Baptist Church is an existing religious institution located at 280 East Lincoln, and that's since 1957. The site is located in the R2 Single Family Zoning District, and so religious institutions in the R2 require a special land use permit. They've been operating under a special land use permit since 1987. The project that you're looking at tonight, the special land use permit amendment, is for the applicant is proposing to renovate their church by removing 2,650 square feet of existing building and replacing it with 4,180 square foot of an addition, and it's this portion of the building that is being torn down and replaced. So that portion of the building is, it's at the corner of Lincoln and Edgewood. It's the east, easternmost portion, and it's also the oldest portion. And the renovations are going to be to the main floor as well as the lower level basement area. So the goal of the project is to modernize the building and add an accessible entrance, bathrooms and kitchen, all accessible, to better serve their congregation and community. And they're maintaining their existing programming and functions, so they're not really adding any additional programming or functioning, functions through this project. They're keeping what they have, but they're increasing the square footage due to the more modern building requirements. And so the bulk of the additional square footage is due to an accessible entrance, an elevator that's going to be protruding off of the rear of the building into the parking lot. And other than that, the building footprint is staying almost exactly the same. So at the planning board, they were heard at the planning board on March 26, 2025, and the site plan at that time showed the two parking lots remaining separate. They have sort of two separate portions of parking lot, a south one and a north, north one that currently exists but currently are not connected. And when they presented that to the planning board, the planning board had some concerns about the safety of the existing lot and like what would happen if the lot's full and a car comes in and can't park. They didn't like the idea of people backing out onto Edgewood. So they postponed a decision and asked the applicant to look at alternate designs to connect the two lots and provide an additional vehicle egress. And so that's what the applicant did, and then on April 9th, 2025, they presented a revised site plan that's very close to what's in the packet tonight. And so it provides a one-way-through connection between the two lots, so that vehicles entering the south lot can exit to the north onto Lincoln. And the planning board appreciated that. They made comments that the site plan integrates well with the neighborhood, and so they approved the site plan and expressed support for the two needed variances, stating that they were not offensive to the neighborhood character. And, you know, based on the renderings, they saw that the exterior stairwell was not obtrusive. And on May 13th, the applicant was heard at the Board of Zoning Appeals for a request for the two variances. The first variance is regarding open space and that it's an existing nonconformity, and originally they were going to just increase that nonconformity by 2.1%. During the BZA, the architect was able to come up with a couple of additional planting spaces around the parking lot to just get that open space to stay the same. So basically, they still needed the variance and they still got the variance, but they're not increasing the nonconformity at all. And so they have 28.8% open space where 40% is required. The second variance is to the side yard setback to allow for a stairwell for egress from the basement level. The basement egress is required per the building code, and they had, you know, a lot of discussion about whether it could go anywhere else, and ultimately it was determined that that was where it needed to be located, and so the Board of Zoning Appeals did grant both of the necessary variances. That's what I have.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very thorough and very well presented. Now we have an opportunity for anyone from the applicant team, from Grace Baptist Church, to speak if they wish to.
Sure. Andrew Walters with Metro Consulting Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I believe also, probably online, is the architect of record from Ganther. I'd just like to thank you for your consideration of this project. We're available for any questions that you might have. From our standpoint, I would just like to emphasize that the need for this project is to modernize the meeting and office space, and there are several parts of the building that are both inside and out that are not currently accessible, and that's the importance of the project.
All right. Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, now we go to the public. Are there any members of the public who have any questions either for Ms. Bozinski or for the Grace Baptist Church team? You can come to the microphone and ask your question in the room, or you can raise your hand if you are online, and we will call on you. I see no questions from the public, either in the room or online, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any commissioners who have any questions? Commissioner Long?
I have a question regarding the parking. Can we go to 522? Page 522 of the packet? So if I'm reading the arrows correctly, you can enter off of Edgewood in the two different entrances, but you have to exit, unless you're backing out of the spots on the south side, which is two-way, everything else is one-way pointing out towards Maple. Is that...
No, Lincoln.
Lincoln.
Lincoln. Well, oh, to Lincoln. Oh, I'm sorry, to Lincoln. I misspoke. So is that, is that true? So if I pull in on the north side, I've got to go, I can only exit after I park out onto, out onto Lincoln. But if I park in the southern lot, I can go back and forth in the lot and exit out if I back out of that lot? Is that, is that what, is that what's intended?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So, so this is an existing lot, and what currently exists today is all on the north. So the lots are not, they're two entirely separate lots, they're not connected. And on the north lot, where you're referring to the one-way, actually, the applicant would have to say whether it's one-way today or not. I believe it's one-way today.
Functionally, it operates the other way.
It operates as a one-way, and it has, they have the diagonal spaces. So it's one-way out to Lincoln. In the southern lot, if you park, you can leave out onto Edgewood. The intention with the connection that the planning board requested was just so that vehicles wouldn't be backing onto Edgewood.
From the north lot.
From the south lot.
Okay. I just wonder why they wouldn't have the north lot also being two-way?
So I think the applicant...
That's how you can look at it the other way. Make them both one-way.
And then exit out onto Lincoln, because then you've just got a circular flow no matter what, and you don't have a risk of conflict.
That was my point.
Sorry, you're saying make both of them...
It's just a question.
It's just a question.
...by his point.
Let's go to Commissioner Emmerich.
So I'll provide some comments, perhaps the civil engineer, Mr. Walters, can opine on this as well. I'm speculating, maybe I'm wrong, but usually a one-way entrance is a width requirement. If you want two-way, it's not wide enough. So I'm guessing it's not wide enough to provide two-way access. So the proposed configuration, to me, looks like the exact same configuration that's out there today, the way they've been operating for however many years, with the one exception of now they have added an egress from the southern parking lot to the northern parking lot. So the one planning board comment was to improve the egress from the southern parking lot, and the northern parking lot is effectively the same exact configuration it is today's. Is that accurate? That is essentially accurate. Largely what's preventing us to provide full two-way access is dimensional constraints. You will notice, though, that the, and Commissioner Emmerich is correct, in that the northern portion of the lot currently is functioning as one-way, and that's exactly how we're proposed to. That drive is still narrower than you could provide two-way access. It's a little wider than you would normally provide for one-way. However, it was important to the church to be able to provide for drop-off access at that entrance. So would it be accurate if they were to provide dual, two-way traffic in the northern lot? That would increase the width of the drive aisle? And the parking space? Cause the parking space is going 90 degrees.
In a different direction to where he was going. We're not looking at touching the northern one. The southern one, the question is, why is the southern one two-way? And if it's a width restriction, make the driveway entrance slightly narrower. Then you've got two one-ways in and one one-way out, and you've got a circular flow all the way through that doesn't have any counterflow opportunity.
Let me just add this point. I'm concerned that you're going to have people in the northern lot back up and then turn left into people that are coming one-way into the south lot. So either you've got to have really good signs, or you're going to have people meeting each other hood-to-hood in that addition. I just, I just, I bring that up because it does, it's counterintuitive, unless you go there every, and maybe after like a month or two, people will, you know, the people who attend church there will, will get it. But I think that having one lot that's one-way and the other lot below with a connector that's two-way...
Confusing.
Is very confusing.
There is a lot of traffic that would be forced, if you were to make, try to force all of those areas into one-way traffic, that it would put a lot of burden on the traffic in front of that entrance. Again, if you've got services, unlike commercial use where you've got, your trips would be dispersed over a particular period of time, all of your traffic is really predominantly going to happen at a pretty condensed window. So the planning board's concern for the southern lot was just that if that lot were full, they didn't want a situation where someone would be forced to back out onto Edgewood. So the purpose of adding that, that additional pass-through was to provide a relief route where they would not have to. So by leaving it two-way, you don't make the situation any worse than it's been, been operating currently. In fact, you have provided a relief to its current operations. So as far as concerns of what the, what the, the, the people of Grace Baptist are used to, to dealing with, this is similar, if not improved, from what they've, they've been living with.
Are they planning on putting signs to not have people turn left?
Do not enter? Yeah.
Do not enter. There's proposed signs on the floor.
Yeah, there are proposed signs.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, really quick. I think you said it, but the four conditions that the planning board put, they've all been met. They were, I can read them to you. Applicant submits plans that meet the 10-foot side yard setback or obtain a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes.
Met? Okay.
They received the variance.
Submits plans that meet the minimum open space requirement or obtain a variance?
Yes. Received the variance.
Okay. Enter into negotiations for a shared parking agreement with the city of Birmingham to reduce the impact of parking on the neighborhoods.
I believe they've been in discussions with the city.
Was that, was that actually part of the resolution or they decided to remove that? It was a recommendation.
The recommendation is to just have the negotiations.
Not to require it.
Well.
But to have the discussion.
Yeah, I wanted to bring that one up.
I believe the planning board backed off, off of the language that was required.
They did.
I'm still not a fan of having the must enter into negotiations. It doesn't mean there's a foregone conclusion. I don't like the must, though.
So have they entered into negotiations?
Have we had discussions? Yes. Do we have a formal document? No, because the project's on hold.
And must comply with the requests of all city departments.
Yes.
That's standard language. All right. Commissioner Emmerich?
I'd just like to add some comments, not really questions, I guess, but this is my neighborhood. I live in this community. I live down right by this. There has never been a parking problem, traffic problem. This is a good asset to the neighborhood. I love that this church is here. It's wonderful. I'm glad that they're there. I'm happy to see that the applicant added that little egress lane on the southern lot. I get why the planning board requested it. They applied it right away and they got both their variances. I have no issues with this application whatsoever, and I'm in support of this.
Well, then would you like to make the resolution?
I'd make, make a resolution to, recommendation to adopt a resolution, adopt the findings of the planning board and the approved special land use permit amendment and final site plan and design review application for 280 East Maple. Is that the right address?
Yeah.
Yep. All of it.
No, East Lincoln.
East Lincoln. That's where I got the Maple from.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to start all over, if I may. Make a motion to, make a resolution to adopt the findings of the planning board and approve the special land use permit amendment and final site plan and design review application for 280 East Lincoln to permit renovation of the existing religious institution and associated parking lot.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I believe Commissioner Long was first. Any comments from the commission on the motion? Any comments from the public on the motion in the room or online using the raise your hand function? I see none. Ms. Bingam, a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Potem Baller?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hage?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoof?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing your improvements come to fruition.
Thank you.
All right. New Business B, Resolution in Opposition to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Resolution 2025-5051. Ms. Ecker?
Yes, Mayor Long. As you discussed a little bit earlier, this was on the last city commission agenda. And if you recall, the commission tabled it or postponed it and moved it to come to this meeting because Commissioner, County Commissioner Cavell was going to be present to provide a little bit of background, which he has now done. So this is the resolution that was provided to us by other municipalities who are similar ones. I think I, well, I can't remember if I said this at the last meeting, but we did have representatives from the manager's office and our finance department attend meetings that were held up at Oakland County. And there were many, many, many angry representatives from other communities throughout Oakland County because this kind of came up at the last minute, right near the end of everybody's budget cycles with these new costs. And there wasn't much opportunity, frankly, any, for us to have the time to consider other options. So that's why this resolution is in front of you. Other communities have passed this, as Commissioner Cavell mentioned earlier tonight. And it's up to you if you want to, to pass this resolution. And then we would forward it to the county just to pass along what your concerns are. But it's up to you.
Thank you. And I will also note that Ms. Ecker made the requested edits to the motion, so it's a little bit more ours. It's not what everyone else passed. We thought some of the language was slightly inflammatory, and that has been removed.
Yes.
So any commission discussion on this? Support?
I'm in support of this.
I'm in support.
In support? All right. Well, then I, I think we had enough discussion on this earlier, so if someone would like to make the motion?
Do we need to read this all? Would you like to read it all in, or?
You do not.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution condemning Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Resolution 2025-5051, as set forth on page two and three of 8B of the packet.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. So we are at New Business C, Resolution approving a three-year contract between the city and Oakland County for assessing services for the period July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. And we have Mary, our treasurer, so.
Good evening, City Commission. Yes, I am requesting approval of a three-year renewal contract with Oakland County for assessing services while still continuing to explore other options. As mentioned during the budget hearing, costs have increased significantly, and we did include this increase in the next year's budget. So it has been approved. The county has provided reliable and cost-effective services since 2007. So even with this increase, it remains more affordable than bringing it back in-house, which I believe, which was $592,000 back then for having assessed it in-house. We are beginning to research other options and have identified a couple of private firms, actually. One has, one of them has no capacity, and the other one did advise us that spring is a good time to onboard. This is, this aligns with our assessing cycle. So approving the contract does give us time to properly evaluate alternatives without rushing to transition during the next, during this tax cycle, and it allows us time to do a thorough analysis and review of our options. This contract is, does include a 90-day termination clause. It provides a flexibility, and it has been reviewed by our city attorney. We recommend moving forward to prove it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, so you're saying that, so there's two reputable firms that would do the work with enough credibility that we could be adequately represented for challenges at the tax tribunal? One of them has no capacity, probably because everybody else is chasing them. But if we, we need to approve this now, but we could get out of it within 90 days, and it sounds like maybe in a year, if we wanted to onboard before we renewed or executed year two, is that the idea? If we find alternate service?
We can frankly get out of it at any time. We don't even have to wait for a year to expire.
Okay. If we find somebody else.
Right. And hence the reason we're recommending we move into this. It keeps us covered. It provides the services. And then we are going to investigate other options and consider doing an RFP, see if there is any better option out there. Quite frankly, as, as you mentioned, we're not certain there is. There are two firms that are, that are pretty good but may not have capacity to handle Birmingham's.
One clarification. It's 90 days' notice, though.
90 days' notice, correct.
Section 11.
Correct.
Yeah, we got to give them 90 days.
Right. But we can provide that notice at any time.
No, I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got to make sure we provide it. If we want to onboard, sorry, that's, that's the point.
Correct.
Right.
Which, as you know, it's going to take us some time to go through that process in any event, so.
All right. So we really don't have a choice at this point.
This is the safest thing to do, to cover our bases, yes.
Commissioner Hoof.
Mary, you mentioned that we switched in 2007. And what were we paying? I think you mentioned the number.
Yes, over $592,000.
Okay.
In, in dollars at that time?
Yes. Back then.
Mayor Potem?
So I want to understand, Oakland County was doing this not because they are a tax authority, but because they were providing a service. In other words, they decided they're going to charge us. Could we decide we're going to charge them?
Charge them for what?
For doing their job.
For, for assessing and equalizing and all this stuff that we do, because they're getting a piece of the action, right? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I do understand. I, I do not know the answer to that.
I mean, there was a suggestion at one point that we would charge the library because they get some of the tax money. Well, maybe we should charge the schools and, and the zoo and the DIA or whoever, you know, I don't know. Is that, is that something we should be looking into?
My, my gut would say that that is not statutorily provided for by the state, that it's incumbent upon the municipality by statute to levy the taxes, and then they get distributed as provided by law. Is there an opportunity to reverse that and charge for that? I will look into it. I can research it. My gut is the answer is no.
Interesting turnabout. If we could, right?
I think I know where your head's going. So from the guy whose business runs around charging a handling fee for processing other people's money, I think that's where you were coming from is, it's, here's the processing fee. If you pay me by credit card, here's the processing fee. You want me to collect your taxes and pass them to you? There's a tangible cost to us to do that. Here's my processing fee. I think that's what he's trying to get at.
I understood what he's getting at. My gut is no, but I will research it and let the manager know the results.
My other question is, I think we're all familiar, maybe we're not, with cases where maybe mistakes were made or something occurred where somebody who ought to be paying a whole lot more in taxes is getting away with paying less because, I don't know why, because they did a renovation that was under the, under the radar. Do you understand what I'm saying? I wonder how much of that is going on here and whether the entity that is doing the assessing makes a difference. Maybe if we had it in-house and were spending more, half a million, whatever the difference is, we might be squeezing more tax money out of, not, that's going to be a very popular position among my constituents, but, you know, do you understand what I'm saying? And, and what? I don't understand how the assessing process works and whether there are holes that can be plugged, but it's a, it's a fair question, I think. Do my commissioners, fellow commissioners agree?
Do you want me to say something?
Certainly.
I don't think there are, frankly, a lot of holes to be plugged, but to your point, if we had more time and more money and more staff to look into it, maybe we would find a few, maybe. I think one of the other benefits of Oakland County, despite frustration with what they're doing at this time, is that they have a lot of experience in many different communities and many different, similar cases. So for instance, when, when, when they assess a property, when somebody appeals the assessment, and Mary, you can chime in here, that's when they come and they appeal their assessment and we go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, they have very good authority, very good reputation because they have done it on so many more parcels than, say, our little assessing department would, for instance. So there's a couple of things like that that you want to look at as well.
It is true that the county has been helpful in helping us responding to the appeals to the tax tribunal. And whether privatized entities would be is helpful or persuasive. And to Janice's point, they carry some persuasive energy because they have been doing it for so long that the tax tribunal tends to respond well to them. Now, if there's private entities that would garner the same favor, I don't know, and time will tell. So when Janice is saying that this covers our basis, it is also our recommendation, my office's recommendation, that we enter into the agreement knowing we can get out of it if we want to. But until someone shows us that there's a better way, unfortunately, we may be stuck with this expensive way, but at the end of the day, it may serve us. We don't know these things yet because we just found out about this a few months ago, and it's going to take some time to vet all these answers.
I have a question.
Yes.
So let's just say hypothetically, down the road, at some point, we hire a private entity to do this assessing for us. How do we anticipate the county responding to that private entity's work? Is there going to be an audit process, challenge process? Are they going to accept the private entity's calculations? Because there's costs involved with going through that process as well. And I think then, let's go to the state level, too. The state accepts what the county does. Is there, is there an appeal process for that? Is it going to be one level removed where it may, they might not trust it as much? Were we going to be involved in audits with regard to that as well? There's costs involved with that. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Definitely.
School district, too, right?
Yep. Absolutely.
All right. Commissioner Haag?
So Mary, specific. In this execution copy that Alex handed out in Term of Payment Schedule of Contract, paragraph 10.2, what is initial and smoothed in terms of, we can understand? What does that mean? I mean, it says, it starts with municipal should pay the county the initial rate, and then it talks about the municipal may pay the total cost of the contract using the smoothed rate.
Yes, the smoothed, yes. So you can start the.
What does, what, what does this mean? Because they're rather dramatically different in dollar amounts per parcel.
They are. So we can start with the higher rate per parcel, which is my recommendation. That is the 46% increase the first year, then it's a 4% increase the next year, and 5% the following, the third year. If we did the smoothing method, we would have a 6% increase originally, but then we would have a 44% increase the second year and then a 32% the third year, 32% increase. So overall, the increase is.
The same.
Correct.
It's the county's way of making it a little easier to swallow this year.
Right. So this, this was a late adjustment, Commissioner Haag, after the original outcry that communities could not budget for this in the current.
So it's five knuckles down the throat versus three knuckles down the throat.
Right. And then, so they, they reduced it in the first year for people to be able to, you know.
Okay. I was trying to understand.
Added it on the back end.
That's fine. All right. Thank you for the explanation.
Yes. All right. So if there's no other discussion, would someone like to make the suggested commission action?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a three-year contract between the city and Oakland County for assessing services for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028, and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and to direct the city manager to investigate alternative assessing service providers.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any comments on the motion? Any comments from the public on the motion, either in the room or online using the raise your hand function? I see none. So Ms. Bingam, a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Potem Baller.
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoes.
Yes.
Mayor Teresa Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Commissioner Haag.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Mr. Ford, you are up. We have a resolution to approve an addendum to the original agreement between the city of Birmingham and Ram Construction Services for the painting at the Chester Street parking garage.
Good evening. So I am back. I believe it was the very last meeting I was here and actually BCT was here presenting their schematic designs for the Chester Street parking garage. During that conversation with BCT, we went through their design package. It sounded like there was a lot of things that the commission liked, however, there were some things that they needed to go back and work on. They are not coming back today presenting those. They're still back working on their revisions and they will come back at a later date presenting their, what we hope will be their final schematic designs. However, the reason I am here today is included in the original repair contract with Ram Construction was, and we talked about this last time, was painting the garage white. So Ram is getting ready to start painting the garage white, probably at the end of this week, probably early next week they'll start. And the reason I'm here today is to basically seek your approval to proceed with BCT's proposed accent painting. There was some discussion and pictures shown in some of their schematic design package, but there's essentially three things that are included in this payment project. The first one is handrails. The garage has a variety of handrails surrounding the exterior perimeter of the garage on every level. This first picture you can see right here, this is a sample of what this handrail could be, and this is on every level of the garage. These are painted green right now, but there's a lot of chipping that hasn't been done in a number of years. This would be included in it. The painting in all three stairwells, so you can see there's this, and you can say it's green, it was green at one time, it's either been faded or it was a different shade of green, but inside these stairwells, you can see like the rooftop over here is painted Birmingham green and there are other areas inside these stairwells that are already been painted Birmingham green, but the majority of it is this off color, whatever color you want to say it would be. This is also being proposed as being painted. And then really what we get into is the new stuff, stuff that the general public would really notice, which is the painting of these columns on the ceilings. You can see right here, as you can see, the wayfinding is not included. This is strictly just, we have a painter onsite, they're going to be painting the garage white. Can we capture them? Are we willing to approve the green accents? So while they're in here painting, they put to paint the green accents and then when BCT comes back to the commission, presents their final schematic designs, its commission approves it, then they could come back at a later day, implement the wayfinding that you see here, which they're working in conjunction with Corbin Design on. It's basically just removing a step from then having to come back at a later date, assuming that these design plans are approved, they would have to reclose all these levels and repaint things again. Obviously, they're going to have to come back again and do some kind of work, but it wouldn't necessarily involve the massive closures of all these levels like we already have right now. So this is really just trying to capitalize on the closures that we have right now. And again, you can see like this ceiling right here, these beams and the columns, this is really what we're talking about coming in right now. BCT worked with Corbin, so they're getting the pantone color directly from Corbin. It's an approved color. They would be doing that. The only thing that I guess I would bring up, that I would point out to the commission right now is this wall right here. These walls exist on every level. This is currently a brick wall and BCT is proposing to paint these. Sarah Rush with WJE, our engineer, you'll probably remember Sarah from previous meetings, has expressed some concern over BCT's desire to paint the masonry walls. She thinks it's just from a, from a maintenance perspective, she thinks it's a bad idea. Once you paint it, you can't go back. Yes, you could sandblast it, there's ways you could get the paint off, but it's really kind of, once you paint it, you've done that work and you're not going back. So we highly recommend that we don't paint the masonry walls, by personal opinion, I kind of agree with her. The price that we, the price in the addendum that we have listed here does include that, however, we have talked to the painter that Ram has hired and they understand that this is a concern, depending on what the feedback here is today, they could easily omit that and we could have this conversation when BCT returns into town to talk about this further. And if the commission's desire is that we proceed with BCT's designs, complete the wall, we can do that easily at that time. It requires a little closure. So my recommendation is that we would not paint the masonry walls, just because we can't undo it.
Aaron, do you have any idea from the memo from Ram, looking at the pricing, beams and columns, ceilings, walls? That looks like it's going to be a rather minor deduct, doesn't it?
It would be a very minor deduct, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hoes.
Yeah, I have a few questions for Aaron. If we don't do the masonry walls as Sarah and you suggest, you just said it's a minor savings.
Yeah, the amount of paint that, you know, I could get the dollar amount from them, but yes, the amount that they're painting the masonry walls in the grand scheme of all the painting that's happening in there is very small. It is only, you know, one side of the masonry wall on every level, so it's, you know, we have three stairwells, it's one side of the masonry wall on each stairwell, so you know, it's five levels, so you know, it's 15 areas, so in the grand scheme, I think it's a very small area.
Okay. The nice thing, Aaron, is you have enough money to do this and I'm going to approve it when it comes forward, but I'm just wondering if you think that there's going to be more unexpected expenses in our decks as we proceed from deck to deck?
So starting with Chester, you know, obviously we're pretty far down the line with Chester right now. Obviously, as we've kind of discussed, it nauseam, it is different than the other decks, right? Because we're kind of doing this on the, as we've already started the project. The other decks will be a much smoother process. We've already talked to BCT and WJE. As we move forward to the other decks, so like Peabody, we believe is going to be the next garage, WJE would in theory probably be the owner's rep on our behalf. They have the concrete waterproofing components that were already, have been approved and planned that they're doing. BCT will hopefully have approved schematic designs, you know, based off your feedback. Assuming that is approved, we will lump that into one big project and WJE would be the owner's rep and coordinating everything. So it would be one big bid package coming out. I guess to get back to your original question, I mean, obviously when they start opening garages up when it's concrete waterproofing, as we saw with this one, you know, they could find a variety of things. I think the big expense that we don't know of at some of the future garages is what would the commission want? So in other words, at the Peabody Garage, you have a stairwell. Are you going to want something really cool and unique that might light up the stairwell or replace a stairwell? I'm just using an example. It's those types of things that I think we'll see when BCT comes back with all the other four garages that you would say, I like this concept. That could be really expensive. But if we're sticking to kind of what you've seen here, I think the only stuff that you would really see pop up would be more concrete, hey, we've opened this up, there's some more spalling, we got a, we thought this was going to be a partial depth repair and not being a full depth repair, that type of stuff, which you can't predict, but you know, I think to answer your question, I don't see it unless it's real structural stuff.
Okay. I have two more questions. One is, when was the last time we looked at the, all the decks with the notion of how much money has to be put into them to make them go on for 15, 20 years? You know, I assume WJE did the study, but when was it?
2021, WJE did the condition assessments for all the garages. They do expect to do another condition assessment for the Park Garage before we get to the Park Garage. They have some concerns about the condition of that garage, so we've talked about it and I think it's the year before we get to that one, they'll do, their recommendation is we do another condition assessment for that one.
Okay. And that's my fourth question. You know, at last week's meeting and the agenda, there seemed to be some problems at Park Street and there was some consideration about raising the rates to cover the cost of whatever the problems are.
Yeah, the advisory parking committee, it was, because the capacity of the Park Street Garage is really as of late, in the last, I would say, since the new year, we've really seen that become our busiest garage. So in looking at the various occupancy charts that we have that the APC has been looking at, there was some, there was some interest of, should we consider raising the rate for monthly parking at that location because it used to be the Peabody or the Pierce Garage where our busiest garage is and that's, the Pierce Garage has the highest monthly rate right now? Should we consider maybe discussing increasing the monthly rate at that garage now because that is the last garage we're considering repairing? We purposely left it to the last one, so instead of waiting, waiting three years before we get to do the repairs, then raising the monthly rate afterwards when people see this nice, you know, see what they would be getting, maybe we raise the rates now so we can help pay for the repairs.
Sounds great.
It was an evolving question. It was something the APC, you know, asked me to put on the agenda. It was a very open forum discussion.
Commissioner Emmerich.
So I think you made it very clear, but just to reiterate, we're just basically moving scope up.
Yeah, we're pulling something out of what we hope to be WJE's true scope and moving it in to this scope.
To take advantage of the closures.
Exactly. Because we think it's very minor in the grand scheme. Actually, the dollar amount is not necessarily minor, it's $430,000. I think it is not minor, but I think we assumed out of everything WJE or BCT is proposing, this is kind of really basic.
And then I'll just note out to the commission that if our parking systems manager is not comfortable painting the block walls, I'm not comfortable with that either, so I don't think that that should be included. So I would be in support of not including that should we have that discussion.
And again, they, I expect them to bring that forward to the commission and talk about it with, you know, the other things that would come back. You know, there was discussion about banners, you know, the murals, all that stuff will come back to the commission. We can talk about it then. I'm not saying I would, you know, it's not an end-all, be-all for me, I just, it sounds like it's, we've seen painted brick masonry walls before and it is a maintenance item, so unless we're really happy with what they're proposing, they have, there are alternates. You could do signage that's attached to it.
Right.
Graphics with the numbers of the floor.
You could hang panels on it that are painted the color green.
Exactly. So there's alternatives.
Commissioner Haag.
Thanks. Number of questions for you, Aaron. So just looking at the breakdown from Ram Services and the way that the work was described, on the first line, it said beams and columns and the way you mentioned it earlier, how many of those were already going to be painted white and now we're painting them green instead? Is that what I'm understanding or these are additional beams and columns to be painted green?
No, everything was going to be painted white. You were correct.
Okay. So just using that one example, $56,500 to change a color.
Four hundred. That's one of my questions, so we might as well get this straight. Are we paying $400 and some thousand dollars just to change color?
Not just to change color.
Okay.
It's also because if you look in the packet on page two, for instance, it's to look at painting the railings on the exterior of the garage, which are.
That's why I was going through it line item by line item.
Which were not in the.
Because that first one of beams and columns.
Which were not in the white contract for the walls and ceilings inside the garage. So all of those that go around every floor, the perimeter of the stair towers, some of the elevator features, some of the things that were not, the white was walls and ceilings.
What were we going to do with the other stuff?
Now we were going to leave, we were going to do it for the BCT people to decide.
Yeah, we were going to leave it.
That's why I'm just looking at things that appeared to be within the original scope and I'm just looking at saying, if it appeared to be in the original scope, that's some really expensive, I can get gold plate cheaper than that.
But I'm going to guess, Commissioner Haag, that when you sprayed everything white all at once, it's a little less work than if you're taping things off and having a white-green junction or two colors of green junction. I think it is more labor intensive to use multiple colors.
That's entirely correct.
And the graphic you see up here, it's like a two-tone, so the radius is, like this is the work where BCT has to give them the dimensions and the radius, but then there's the two-tone green, so obviously this is a darker, then there's the lighter, like strip break there that matches it.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but let's break it down line item by line item. Beams and columns, ceilings, walls. Okay, the semicircles are ceiling. I get it. I hadn't got a question about that one, not worried, other than the fact it just feels like it's very dark, that it creates a dark overhang, but that's, you know, what do I know about colors? It was just things like beams and columns that we were already painting. Is it really $56,000 to change color and do some masking off work that it's probably not as much because we're not doing the logos? We're literally masking off area and the logos aren't part of it. It just seemed excessive. I agree about painting block wall. I've tried removing paint from brick before and I used every nasty chemical known to mankind and I regret it. It doesn't come off, it always looks terrible afterwards, so I'm 100% in support of that. Then just the last line item, mobilization. We just got told they're already there with all the equipment, so what's being mobilized?
Got to go pick up the paint.
You pay me $11,000 to go pick up some cans of paint, I'll go pick them up.
My guess is in addition, that as Mayor Long pointed out, there's different labor folks, different personnel and different costs involved, because somebody that's spraying a spray, using a sprayer and just doing all the walls and all the ceilings and all the beams and all the floors, it's a whole different story than when they have to do detail paint work.
We're not doing the logos, that's not detailed.
We're not doing the logos, but we are doing something where you want a clean edge with a different color paint. You have to calculate the radius, follow the plans, it's a little different than blanket spraying.
So that's not included in the cost for doing the individual line items? Then what is the cost for individual line items then? Because if we're masking everything off on the beams and columns for $56,000, what are we then mobilizing for the masking off? I'm asking for detail because the detail is not apparent and I'm reading things that appear to be duplication of work that was already contracted, it's just basically changing a color. Like I mentioned, things like rail coatings and what have you. I have no questions. Understood, but things that were detailed, it doesn't make sense and it adds up to several tens of thousands of dollars, in other words, tens of percent of the cost. That's all I'm asking for is clarification of what we actually get within line items that were already there. If we don't have the answer now, that's fine, I'd like to know it later, because it's clearly a not to exceed and that's fine, but I'd like to see it go lower than the number because it's a not to exceed. That's the question.
All right. And I had a question also, as long as we're on that page, about the mural other allowance. So it says we've been included, so of the 430, $100,000 is held out as an allowance to capture the painting of the murals.
Yeah, so, so in their original pricing, they did have this line item for $100,000, for the murals and obviously we are not ready for murals, nor do I anticipate that. Seaway Paintings, who is the painting contractor that this would go to, would do the murals. We elected to, Ram was ready to pull that out. We elected to leave it in there in case there was discussion, obviously there was some discussion about, well, maybe we had too many murals, should we remove some? If we elected to have an alternative, whether it's we paint the wall green instead of white or we have some kind of an alternate, we paint across there, whatever the option would be, we thought it was better to have a line item there so the painting could be included as of right now. The wall is just getting painted white and if a mural is approved later on down the line, then the mural would go on top of it. We just thought it was better to include the line item there in case we had an alternate and then it would be included in.
But we wouldn't pay it out until we executed it?
Correct. It would not be paid out. So if we choose not to do any of this, then this contract reduces by that. They just gave us their highest price if we ended up wanting to do something there.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Long?
It's the warranty on the paint. How long do they give us? Do you know?
I did not ask that.
It's not in here, it probably is in the other contract. I just wondered if you knew what that is.
I did not ask that and I can definitely get that for you.
Yeah, I'd like to know that. Hopefully it's several, if not many, years for that kind of price. That's all I have. And I do want to reiterate what Commissioner Emmerich said, which is this is pulling forward what would potentially be done later by a different contractor when it's not shut down.
The odds are it would be done by the same contractor, so Seaway, to your point, yes. BCT would contract somebody else. So when we went out to bid for this Chester Street Garage Repair Project, all three contractors who bid on it had a line item for painting, every single one of them used Seaway painting.
Mayor Potem.
Just a couple of questions. The railings that are chipped, are they going to look like chipped railings with new paint on them or are they going to look like new railings painted?
Well, they're not replacing the handrails, so I don't think they're going to come back powder coated, but no, they will be sanded.
They will be sanded.
They will be sanded and repainted, so they're nice.
But we may see chips underneath or not. That's my question.
You should not, no.
Because now you go through the, all the decks and it's like somebody slapped paint on a.
Correct. But it's not going to be a new, brand-new powder coated, smooth one. It will be, but no, the chips will be.
Texture, it helps you grip it.
I understand the concern about the masonry walls. Is, where that one is, is that a masonry wall?
It is.
Okay, so we got a problem, I think, sorry, Commissioner, Mayor Long had an excellent suggestion that, I mean, if it's that important, it's got, it's got graphics on it, it's not just a. graphics on it. It's not just a brick wall, that we do a panel or something.
Correct. And BCT understands Sarah and my concern. And that's why, at a later date, when they present their schematic designs, the intent would be that they'll either say they'll push hard that we paint it, or they'll also provide us an alternate option, which could be signage, you know, a graphic attached to the wall. They will have an alternate option.
You can just come up with a panel that's that big and paint it.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. But that's an alternate option they, they will provide.
Those are my only questions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Emmerich?
Commissioner Haig brought some interesting points. In terms of timing in their current contract, if we decide to delay tonight to get answers to these questions and bring it back to the next meeting, do they go forward with white and then we come back and paint it with green? Or do we hold off on that stuff? How does the existing contract and the timing for what they're doing now move forward if we?
They're scheduled to start with white either by the end of this week or early next week. Because they have to release our bottom two floors before they can move up. So that's kind of.
I think we approve the contract and then get the answers.
That, that was my observation about a not to exceed.
Yeah.
Because then you take out whatever light item. It's not a fixed price. It's a price per item.
Yeah.
Adjusting for the murals and adjusting for the masonry walls.
Whatever else ends up being clarified, yes.
Can I just move the suggested resolution on this one?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments on the motion at the commission? Any comments on the motion from the public, either in the room or online using the raise your hand function? I see none. Ms. Bingham, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Baller?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Haig?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We move to, uh, new item E, uh, next financial update. And we have Ms. Chris Braun from next.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, um, for having me. I appreciate your time. And, uh, I wanted to support the documents that are in the packet with a little bit more detail. So feel free to stop me anytime you have a question, or you can, um, just save them for a little bit later. Um, Next has been proudly serving the community for 47 years, since 1978. Our mission statement is to be a welcoming place that enriches the lives of our community. Our guiding principles is one to be a recognized leader in serving our 50-plus community. Our seniors served during the 2324 year over 3,100 members and non-member residents. And those non-member residents, you'll remember, are the ones that receive support services at no charge. So we are proud that that number is continuing to grow and more people are thinking of Next First when they need support or additional resources to stay independently in their home. Secondly, deliver lifelong learning and wellness through comprehensive programming. Our programs are offered, I, I think many of you are familiar with those, um, a wide variety of programs from art to travel to speakers to, um, mental, I mean, not mental health, um, healthcare and things of that nature. But we also have a, a large variety of opportunities for just connections to each other and to the community. And third is to be an integral part of the larger community. And you can see with over 222, 20 volunteers, we certainly attract a lot of people to the community and to Next. And we also partner with many different organizations like the library, the police, the fire, the schools. So really making it a, a community partnership. Um, our financial overview, which I, like I said, was trying to add more detail than what you had in the packet. Um, our fundraisers, I'm not going to rate them all. You, you can certainly see fundraisers account for about 15% of our budget. Fees, 17%. Grants and plan giving, 24%. Municipal contributions, 15%. Other income is, um, things that would be, um, sponsorships and individual donations at 5%. And then our in-kind, um, VPS, um, location where we're, we are at 24%. Our, our funding highlights, I believe, are, um, important to point out. Diversified funding reduces the risk of our insured stability. 15% of our revenue is from municipal resources, which provides a stable base for us. And 50% of our revenue is from private donors, which demonstrate community support. Um, I thought this was an interesting statistic that we have 149 average donors per fund appeal. We do two of those a year with an average of 141, um, as a donation size, which means, you know, we slowly get to our goals. But, um, we, we're very excited that we have that kind of support. And our financial strengths are $2.7 million endowment, strategic uses of our resources, and a very dedicated staff that, that certainly knows how to stretch a dollar and, and work with the community. And our expense allocation on, on this slide, fundraising, just over 3%. Marketing, just not quite 2%. Overhead at 15%. Our operating budget at 38. Programs at 8.7 and outreach at 3. And then again, our in-kind donations or in-kind, uh, space to call home is 29%. And our liquidity analysis is our operating reserves exceed three and a half months' worth of expenses. Our restricted funds are designated for at-risk Birmingham residents and our cash on hand is 278. So the metrics we like to compare that to, our, our operating revenue is growing and it has consecutively for the last 11 years, which is positive and the status is good. Our months of operating reserve, as I mentioned, is 278, which, which is about three plus months of our operating budget that we have. Our debt to asset ratio is well under the 30%, so therefore excellent. And our debt to asset ratio is really a little misleading there because all of our debt is very current. It's program, deferred program expenses, deferred, um, um, sponsorships that people who pay for a year in advance and we have to bill them monthly or bill them quarterly. So those, um, the debt to asset ratio is a very current debt ratio. And then our funding efficiency is, um, this year for every $5 raised for $1 spent. So again, a three to one ratio, which is excellent for a nonprofit. We have independent financial review and compliance status. The independent review is clean annual reviews from Gordon Advisors. You have a copy of one in your packet tonight. The Form 990, which is a nonprofit tax, um, form we file annually on time and is publicly available. Our state registration and licenses are all current and compliant. Our grant compliance is 100% compliance rate on all grants requirement. And our board oversight, we have 19 independent board members plus liaisons from the village of Beverly, Franklin and Bingham and a Birmingham school liaison. So, um, all the communities we serve have a liaison on our board that then has full oversight of all of our financials and all of our, um, monthly ongoing meetings. We certainly invite Birmingham to have a commissioner on our, our board too as well. We used to have one and have had one forever until the Y was purchased and then Elaine McLean rolled off for, uh, conflict of interest. But we welcome anyone back at any time. Our transparency measures are the annual impact reports that are published, distributed and available online. All of our monthly board meetings include financial reviews. The finance committee meets quarterly. The donorship or donor stewardship and recognition programs are in place and we have regular community presentations. Priorities and goals for the upcoming years is to complete the new facility project for future sustainability, increase community awareness of Next and Next Support Services, reaching more residents in need, increase municipal involvement for better community engagement, increase municipal financial support in anticipation of relocation, and then of course, increase membership and program attendance. Our three-year growth strategy is to expand our support service programs because we know there's many more people in the community in need than we're currently reaching. That's, that's been a problem of ours. It's, Next is really one of those places you seek out when you need it. But we try to like to get the, the message out before families are looking and there's a, a crisis or an urgent, you know, need to be met. We'd like to expand our program offerings by 5% each year, improve the building amenities in a new facility, add a dedicated grant writer to the staff, and increase partnerships and collaborations. Currently, we have a nice partnership and collaboration with Henry Ford Health and they support us by, um, sending in their staff and their medical professionals to speak once or twice a month on issues that are most concerning to seniors and those are very popular. Um, always well attended with 50 or so people in attendance. And then our three-year funding strategy would be adjust membership rates, increase fee-based programs by 5% each year, bring on additional two to three major sponsors, somebody like a Henry Ford. And we are already in talks with a couple of, uh, sponsorship opportunities for that. Increase our grant applications by 30%, introduce an additional major fundraiser, and increase focus to improved plan giving success. So that is, um, our financials and the key takeaways would be 47 years of continuous financial stability. We've never lost a dime, never been in the red. We have strong program focus year after year, diversified revenue streams, which reduce the risk of insured sustainability, efficient operations that maximize impact per dollar invested, strong compliance record and transparent financial management, and a clear growth strategy with identified funding needs. So that is, um, where we are today. And I welcome any questions.
All right. We'll start at this end. Commissioner Hope?
Yeah, Chris, um, the only question I have for you is about the endowment, which I think you said is 2.8 or 9?
Yep, correct.
2.7. Okay. Are there restrictions on that?
There are restrictions on about 300,000 of it.
Okay. So almost two and a half is free for your use.
It is set aside for capital improvements primarily. And that is why it's, it's to the credit of the, the finance committee grown nicely. We, we have a very conservative portfolio, but the market has been good to us and it has, um, increased because we haven't spent it because we had no building to spend it on. So up until this point, we've just been lucky with, um, with our advisors.
Okay. That's it.
Commissioner Haig?
Yeah, I'm probably going to take up all the questions. Okay. So, um, just go through the financials just for transparency. So when I look at the, in the package, we had, um, statement of financial positions for different periods of time. So for instance, September 30th, 2024, total assets 378, 923. And then September 30th, December 31st, 2024, it shows $500,000 increase in assets, but no source. Uh, because the statement of assets doesn't show what you just mentioned with the endowment fund in it at all. So that is a transfer, but if I'm doing an audit, I'd look at that and go, where did $500,000 suddenly spring in from in three months? Because there's no source there which is account A to account B. So just a point of, the money flow looks funny. We know where it came from, but nobody else does because I can't see it. Um, if you go back a few steps in your presentation, I think it was the second slide, um, stop. Next one.
Next one?
Next one. Just at the bottom, you say one-time transfer of 400,000, the purchase of 400 East Lincoln. I think you meant 500,000.
No, I meant 400 because we took 100,000 from our day-to-day operating independent bank account, not from the endowment.
Interesting. Did anybody else know that?
No, that's not about the.
Okay.
That is, that page isn't about the endowment. That's just about.
Yeah, I was just understanding the numbers. Um, okay. So some of the things I've been looking through and thinking about, um, when you looked at your forward plan, the relocation, and you went through your various expenses, what you've shown is the funding that you needed to operate under the criteria that you operate under today.
Correct.
With the MOU for the building as it stands right now, you're now liable for a certain portion of the operating expenses.
I'm going to stop you, Commissioner Haig, because this is a report on the inter-local agreement. It is not about the project that has been tabled.
I'm getting there because I need to explain where my next point comes from.
We're, we're not asking to speculate about future expenses. This is a report.
Okay, next point.
That's reported by the inter-local agreement.
Right now, the amount of money you get per capita from each city, Birmingham is significantly higher on a percentage per capita basis than any of the other participants, to the point where Franklin is pathetic, to put it politely. Um, my goal for you is to have them match our per capita, which is $5.91 per capita for every person inside Birmingham, which would then give you an operating fund of 216,187 in contributions per year instead of 190. So that would increase your total funds because we need to be able to put pressure on the other three municipalities to help them get up to the same level. Because right now, we're subsidizing them. Longer term, my personal goal is $5.91 per capita is not enough. I want to see that go up to $7. And at $7 per capita for each city, you then get 253,743 dollars in contributions per year. Because I feel you need to have higher operating costs. So the review of how this works into their funding as far as anything for the other, other municipalities, that's where I was going. Because you need to understand why I'm explaining. I feel they need more money. But the pressure is actually on the other municipalities, first of all, just to match us, because they don't. They don't value their seniors as much as Birmingham does. And the next one is I want to increase the amount of money to help you operate better. Because that's going to support your offering right there of expand program offers by 5% each year, which your current funding pathway won't support. So I'm trying to help you get there.
No, I, I appreciate that. And as you noticed in the inter-local, there is a paragraph that allows us to renegotiate that. And we certainly will. And I know the conversations have already been had with the various villages who are supportive of increasing their contribution. They just don't know to what point yet based on what we end up moving into.
Ms. Ecker?
And I just want to clarify. I'm not disagreeing with any points that you're making, but that's not the purpose of tonight's presentation because we are already in this interlocal agreement, which was signed in 2021. And we have to give a year's notice if we want to get out of it or change it. And that's part of future discussions when we decide if there is going to be a project to do something new, a new building.
No, no, you missed my point completely. Take new building out of the discussion. This is about operating funds on an annualized basis. It has nothing to do with a new building. Absolutely nothing. That's an irrelevancy in this discussion. It's purely about the contributions to help Next be financially successful, to provide the services as shown up here, to be supportive of the seniors in our community. That's all it is. It's got nothing to do with where. It's got to do with the means to do it.
Right. But the figures for each of the communities were established and agreed upon in the interlocal agreement in 2021.
But we could, we could still ask to renegotiate it, independent of a new building or not a new building, just to say there needs to be more equity based on headcount.
That's exactly what I'm looking at.
And if membership went up, Commissioner Haig, in those communities, would you allow?
I'm actually looking at it as per capita. So it's every single resident of them. That's why I came up with my per capita number.
Okay. No matter how many use.
It's not looking at membership. It's literally looking at how much do you contribute per person that lives within your boundaries.
How about per senior person? I mean, people could push back.
I've, I've done that before. That's what I did previously. But if we're looking at it like this, I think per capita is probably just as fair because it comes down to what each household gets to pay in their taxes anyway. So I just picked a normalized number because that way there's no complaining about, well, I pay more than the other guy. No, everybody pays on the same basis.
Okay. So that's a suggestion. Did you have other questions?
That was really, I just wanted to figure out how to help them improve, to be able to provide that. Because that's important.
Okay. Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Baller?
Uh, yeah. Uh, thank you for all you do. Um, do, all these reports, other than Gordon, do, do you do that? Or do you have a finance person or?
We have a finance person, yes. A full-time, I mean, a, a finance coordinator, director, accountant. And we also use, we have a finance committee that meets quarterly and they overlook it. And then of course, our board overlooks it monthly. So we use Morgan Stanley for the endowment.
Um, well, as long as you brought that up. I was curious about the terminology of quasi endowment. What's that? What is that?
I knew there'd be one thing I wasn't quite ready to answer. Quasi, I bet you could answer it because you do foundation work all the time.
So in the philanthropic world, there are, you can have endowments that are determined by the donor. So the donor gives you money. It says, I am establishing an endowment. And that is a full and irrevocable endowment. You can also have what is known as a quasi endowment or a board-designated endowment, where the board decides to take funds that it receives from a variety of sources. the board decides to take funds that it receives from a variety of sources and put them in an endowment for future use. And then you can develop with it, as a, as an organization, your spending policy for use of endowments. So that's, a quasi-endowment is an endowment that they probably, like, if you, somebody died and you got a large request, and you're like, we don't want to use that as regular operating income, we're going to designate the board to set that aside and save it. That would be a board-designated or a quasi-endowment.
Okay, and it does say board-designate. So that's very interesting. I would like more information about that. For example, how long did it take you to build that endowment?
Probably 47 years. No, it has been a long, long time coming. I think we predated...
I mean, you don't have a graph that shows its growth over time?
I do have a graph that shows its growth, and it's, our graph starts in 2012, when Morgan Stanley took it over.
Okay, and what was the value in 2012?
One million?
Okay, so it's gone from one to, what is it, three?
2.7.
2.7, yeah, since 2012. Okay. So, as Mayor Long pointed out, the board of your organization can designate what it's for.
Correct.
Have they?
Capital improvements primarily, unless we have a shortfall in the budget, which hasn't happened in 10 years, but could be used for that. It had been in the past periodically.
And is that, do you memorialize that somehow?
If it's board-designated, the board could change it at any time, the board, so sought, except for the $300,000 that's restricted.
Correct.
Okay.
We do have a funding, I mean, a finance policy and a funding mechanism of what money will be spent in what bucket, so to speak.
So in the context of our support for you through the inter-local agreement, and all the stuff we've been through over the last year or more, it is probably reasonable for us anticipating that our support will only increase, that, that we be confident that you've looked at the future, and with much more detail than the bullet points here, right? Like, whatever happens, that you're prepared financially to deal with it, because we don't, because we want to support a sound, sound organization with plans. So I'm just going to bring up one thing that bothers me, which may or may not be related to this, and that's the, and I want to ask you a couple of questions about the amount that you've, you've said represents the contribution of BPS.
Uh huh.
$300,000?
$310,000.
On one, it was a little less than 300, but on the other, it was, you said more. Let's say 300,000. Where, how has that number changed over the years?
It has not changed much. It is, that is given to us by BPS. We don't control that at all.
They don't, they give you the, the space, they give you the maintenance, they pay the utilities.
They also give us the report and give us the market value of their in-kind donation.
Yes, they determine the market value of their contribution.
They tell you?
Yes.
How do they tell you?
In a written report.
And it hasn't changed over the years?
No, it really, it really hasn't. It really hasn't.
And actually, so from the June statement, part of the number is BPS, and part of it is smart van transportation.
So 298, 634.
Right.
That's very interesting. So, so even when they stopped paying your salary, the number didn't change?
No, no, it did not. It's just part of my salary.
Okay, and when you look at that number, I mean, do you, do you think that that's a realistic amount, that, that it's, that what you are getting, that that's what it's worth? Or do you think that it's worth less or more?
I think it's probably a realistic amount for the 10,000 square feet that we utilize, include if we were to pay for utilities and even some rent. I think that would be a very reasonable amount.
And janitorial.
And maintenance, landscape, IT, IT.
They've been actually very generous in supporting.
It's just the, what, what I see here is, looking back, what I don't see as a, as a somewhat major, but actually, in the scheme of things, the $120,000 we give you every year is kind of a drop in the bucket. So maybe it's, maybe, maybe it's not that important, but, but looking ahead, with the possibility that there would be a greater contribution by the city of Birmingham, I'd be interested in seeing more forward-looking statements.
I would be happy to. This, I was asked for the 2324 financial report. That's why you are fairly static, but I would be happy to share that with you at some point.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. And thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to getting this on an annual basis. And thank you for coming to make the presentation.
My pleasure.
All right, New Business F, motion adopting an amendment to City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, regarding holding meetings that fall on holidays. And we're going to hear from Ms. Kucherik or Ms. Ecker?
Go ahead, okay. We noticed last year, and it was already too late, that it would appear as though when the schedule for calendaring those commission meetings, that we're perhaps not following the ordinance to the literal word. So the Charter simply tells us that the city commission meetings must be established by ordinance provided by the city commission, and not less than twice a month. That's all the Charter says. So we pass an ordinance to say that the commission meetings shall be held not less than twice a month on such days as the city commission shall determine. And if a regular meeting should fall on a legal holiday, the city commission may cancel the meeting or hold the meeting on the next day that is not a legal holiday. Then, under the city commission overview on the website, it has been determined that the commission meets on the second and fourth Monday of every month. So the point is that the calendar each year that you look at and you, you pass a resolution to set the commission meetings for the next year, if the calendar gets offset on the second and fourth Monday because of a holiday, instead of it being set on a Tuesday, it's been set on an alternate Monday. Now, it does say as determined, and you are determining that. I guess what's troubling me is that our ordinance should be strictly concurrent with what we're doing or not. So here's the question for the commission. Do you always want commission meetings on Mondays, regardless if it's a second or fourth? Or do you want to do what the current ordinance says, which is if there's a meeting on a legal holiday, it gets moved to Tuesday? If you want them to be Mondays only, then we should amend our ordinance?
Which is the motion that's in front of us.
Correct.
Pardon me?
Correct, and the ordinance, the draft ordinance is included in the packet as well.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mary, if we do the Tuesday, are there conflicts with anything else?
There could be, yes.
Yes.
With other commissions and other committees, and could be another holiday. There are certain religious holidays that are two and three days long, so then now you're pushing it to a Wednesday or a Thursday.
Commissioner Hogue, my concern would be that if it's not on Mondays, it would also likely interfere with the cable access live broadcasts of those meetings on, on days that are not Mondays, because I'm sure they got other communities booked for other things. So my concern would be affecting access and transparency to the public if they're not on Mondays, which we pretty much have locked up.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Kind of following on that point, I was, what's the public use, aside from the cable? What's the public use to? How long have we been doing this?
For a very, very, very long time.
For a long...
I mean, I've...
Decades at a minimum.
Stick with consistency.
Yeah, so at some point it was determined the second and fourth. And looking at next year, this year was, was different. This year had a lot of, of interesting jockeying and changing. Next year, I think Alex and I looked at, there was only two months where it got shifted from the second and fourth to the first and the third because of holidays. So it is my recommendation that you do accept and approve and do the amendment according to the last page of the packet 8F, which states, regular meetings of the city commission shall be held not less than twice a month, consistent with your Charter, usually on the second and fourth Monday of the month. That's what's been happening. As the city commission shall determine by resolution in the preceding year, if a regular Monday meeting should fall on a legal holiday, the city commission may determine to move the regular Monday meeting as appropriate to accommodate at least two city commission meetings a month, if it lands on a state or national holiday, and/or those days so designated by resolution of the city commission, because we have a lot of other holidays that have been designated by the commission that are not state or federal holidays. And the language of this, of this ordinance is intentional to allow for flexibility to be determined by the commission each year at the assistance and direction with the clerk.
And as you recall, every year you get the set schedule for meetings proposed for the year, and you get to approve it before we go ahead and order the published calendars.
All right, so the will of the commission?
I have a question. Make a motion for the Mondays only.
Well, here, I'll make a motion if that, if I can. Make a motion adopting amendment to the City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Commission, Section 2-260, to move all city commission meetings that fall on a holiday to the alternate Mondays as needed.
Second. Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any comment on the motion?
Yeah, hey, if you want to make more money than we do all year, we ought to work for Alex on Election Day.
I believe that's probably a conflict, Commissioner Hogue. Mary, does this, a roll call for an ordinance change?
I have a question.
Yes.
Only every four years.
How much, how much does it cost us to make this change?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
No printing, no publishing?
No, because we're going to print the calendar either way, and we're not changing it mid-cycle. We're doing it for next year.
And the amendment gets sent into our publishing company, so the amendment to the ordinance will go onto the website.
Okay. Good. It's free.
And the good, the good joy of your city attorney, that your ordinance is consistent with your behavior, it's priceless. It's like Visa.
So noted.
Mr. Bingam, we'll hold on, sweetheart.
It's priceless.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogue?
Yes.
Mayor Treysong?
Yes.
Sheriff Poetan Baller?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Hag?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We now move to commission items for future discussion. I'm also required to bring up the item for future discussion at the next reasonable agenda. No discussion on the topic will happen tonight. Anything? Seeing none. Commission discussion on items from a prior, prior meeting. Commissioner Hag, we are in stage one for residents survey. It's your opportunity to convince us to move it to stage two.
Why would we not want to know what the residents here, that live here, want? Why would we not want it? Anyone that says they don't want to know, why are you sitting up here? That's just the compelling argument I have, is I want to know.
Are you an inquiring mind?
Every once in a while, it happens, yeah.
All right, so...
It's a great concept.
So the next step would be to ask them to come to research what it would take to do a survey like this, and tell us how much it would cost, who would do it? They'd have to issue an RFP, right?
Or just do it with the internal resources of having two people working communications already.
Yeah, why doesn't...
One, you had mentioned at one point that it should be scientific, right?
Yes.
Scientific is...
So the city would let us know whether they believe they have the capacity to design a survey, they would make recommendations, you know, how they might want to deploy it, and it would be...
I would recommend Commissioner Baller's approach of using large language models, because it is absolutely astonishing what you can generate with them in minutes. And I mean, absolutely astonishing. Nobody can generate the content to start asking to create what the questionings look like. I was given an example at work today, which actually blew away everybody as to how in-depth it got, to the point of cross-referencing specifications and pulling up paragraphs in specifications from three different countries.
All right, so is there a motion? We've had some discussion, to move this to a full agenda item?
Motion to proceed with getting a community survey. Most. Residents' priorities.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now Commissioner Baller, city service standards.
Good organizations have standards of service. It's that simple. If you're a customer, or a constituent, or whatever, and you come to the city, you send an email, you make a phone call, you request something, the Freedom of Information Act codifies certain things if we have to make, if someone makes a freedom of information request. But that has nothing to do with things like building permits. So I would suggest that the city make a list of all the things that they do, and they can probably group some, and then suggest what are reasonable standards of service that we can then tell people when they, when they come to the city and they want something, that they can expect a response within X number of days, weeks, months, whatever. And this, this goes for, you know, you know, return phone calls, return emails, things like that, as well as services that one might be paying for.
Would you include, I mean, so is, are these administrative taxes, or are also use, are administrative services, or only, like, you said, permits, FOIAs, phone calls?
FOIA is covered by the law.
Right.
This covers everything else.
But are you, are you including, like, physical repairs to things, or is this just administrative services?
I don't know if it's appropriate. You know, if somebody complains there's a pothole, and the pothole's at least this big, maybe we have a standard, or maybe we don't, for how quickly that's addressed.
Or respond to the, people respond to the governor before it gets repaired.
Right, or, or at least you respond to the person who has, you know, expressed the concern, right? A lot of times, we get lots of emails, right? Sometimes one or more of us respond, sometimes nobody responds, right? Because, you know...
No, I always respond.
Okay, well...
Well, so what you're really looking for is a standard of follow-up, a timeframe for follow-up, and to ensure that there is a response given, so that things don't just fall into a vacuum, which creates further frustration.
Well, and the, I mean, some of the things, like building permits, or permits to add on a patio in the back, or a dining platform, or whatever, those people ought to have reasonable expectations for when they'll get, I've heard stories of people waiting months and months for, to get a building permit. So that was, to be honest, that was one of the, but, but it's more than just that, I think. You don't have to cover everything, but you got to cover the things that are important to people.
All right, so Ms. Ecker, it sounds like this would be in your court to propose?
Or it's in our court to...
To decide if you want it to be an agenda item.
No, 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 to propose what things might be covered, should this get voted on tonight to approve, you know?
We, we can give some, some, some examples, for instance. One, a couple of comments that I would make, I said, I think is, one, it would be probably best to say guidelines, because, for instance, let's say, and I'll take an example, if there's an extreme rainstorm that happens, and there's a big storm, and then there's trees down, and then there's, you know, damages to roads, or blocked streets, or water in basements, you know, we can't, we can't guarantee that we're going to get to everyone within 48 hours, for instance, but we prioritize. So there's other factors that go into, instead of a straight, yes, we'll respond. So if all of a sudden, for, for instance, when we had that big storm last summer... So if all of a sudden, for instance, when we had that big storm last summer, we couldn't even respond to all of the phone calls that quickly, because we were just ringing the phones off the hook.
Well, that's a criteria that you can set out. If it's an extreme event, then there will be an understandable delay in response to each and every single inquiry, because there's a reason.
And that's why I would recommend a guideline.
If it's normal business, it's something different. I think that's sort of where he's going.
I understand what you're saying.
I feel like Claude could help. I mean, really.
That's what I'm saying. Large language models are actually getting good.
Yes. Honestly, I understand what you're saying. But having worked down in community development for 19 years, I can tell you that there's an abundance of reasons why things... Some things take more time, and other times they don't. So it's not just as simple as if somebody submits plans that they're going to get their building permit in five working days. We don't know what kind of emergencies or situations come up in those five days. We don't know whether they've submitted full and complete plans, or there's something missing. So a lot of times, those delays are because they haven't included everything, and they go back, and the building department, or whoever, goes back and says, "Okay, well, you're missing X, Y, and Z," and then we wait another three months, and then they want it turned around in three days. Now, to be fair, there's also examples where things get reviewed, and something comes up later in the process that people weren't told about, that I would say the city's fault, for lack of a better word, for delaying it. But the vast majority of the times are, it just depends on the circumstances in each individual case. So I understand what... I do understand what you're saying. You're trying to eliminate any unnecessary delays.
Can I make a suggestion? This is not a one-size-fits-all-for-each-department, and what happens with it. So I think if you're going to tackle this, it's more like best practices for each department, you know? And, you know, returning a phone call, you know, in one department is vastly different than issuing a building permit in another department. That's what I'm grappling with. I like the idea. I just think that... I think that you cannot have one-size-fits-all with regard to this. I think it's an unrealistic expectation to just do a blanket across the line. So that's what I'm struggling with.
And I would also say, as another example, for instance, we have people that routinely call five, six different departments, because they don't like the answer they get here. They call a different department, they call different people. So a lot of times, you can't necessarily... Again, I'm speaking from my side of the table, right? In the office, on the front lines, that you can't always give them an answer upfront, because, for instance, the example somebody brought up earlier on Court and Lake, that said, "Nobody's called me back. Nobody's emailed me. Nobody's answered anything." I got that email. I immediately sent the feelers out to all the different departments, because I know, because personally, multiple department heads had told me that they'd had interactions with this person. But I can't respond right there in five minutes, because I have to lay out all of the facts, and I have to talk to all of the different people to say, "So that allegation was made, and you can see from the email, it was not true. There were multiple communications back and forth." But it takes time to do... When somebody makes an allegation, it takes time to do all the research and get all the facts in order and respond. Then we have other multiple people that just routinely call with all kinds of things, and they call different departments, and...
Couldn't we have that list?
Well, if you want to call me sometime, and I'll be happy to discuss a few of them. We have a few regulars that do call on a regular basis, and, you know, a lot of times, they're legitimate concerns, other times they're not. But it takes time and effort for the staff to go around and figure out if they're valid concerns.
Well, would it be potentially more helpful? Because Gov Alert has a form of externally viewable tracking in the responses that happen. And I know it is tracked as a metric inside the city. We were told that several times very early on, and it has expanded in the scope of it. Is there a way of trying to almost push things into that system, so that there's a visibility for you bracket back?
Oh, my goodness. We've been trying to do that since we started GovPilot.
But to push it further, to basically, someone phones up, says, "I blah, blah, blah." And I'm like, "Thank you very much. We need you to fill it into this system. It'll take you 60 seconds."
Or we put it in.
Right. And how many times have I asked that in an email or a communication? But we also don't want to be rude to customers, to residents that are calling us.
Well, no, this is the direct response to them, phrased politely, obviously, but we have this system. This is how we're tracking exactly what you're asking for. We can service your requirements much better if you help us by doing process X.
Well, I don't use computers very well. I don't know how... I don't have that on my phone. I'm not comfortable with that. I'd rather just leave them... You know, there is a lot of different things.
And there's the online form.
There is the online form as well.
And I thought it was about 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, the last time we reported.
Melissa, do you remember the number?
Yeah.
I think it's going more towards Gov Alert, and we are definitely trying to push that.
Right.
But then you still get a lot of people that say, "Well, I don't want to do that. I'm just putting it in."
Right. And I look at Gov Alert pretty regularly. Some of the things that are on there are not things you can fix, some of the complaints. So they don't get closed out, they linger, because there's not a resolution. So that's a separate category. But so all of this could be, if the Commission wants... If we want to bring it back, if Commissioner Baller wants to make a motion, we'll move it to stage, to a full agenda item, if the Commission votes that way, and then the city manager can come back with some thoughts on what things might be included and what standards might be. And we can have a discussion. You can propose, we can request.
Sounds like you just made the motion.
I'll second it, based off of it being a general, high-level...
Discussion.
Yeah. Not to go, "Well, if process A then answered it," just generalizations. Just come up with something instead of nothing.
So we have a motion to discuss city service standards or guidelines as a full agenda item.
I see.
All right. Any comments on the motion? Did we have a second? We have a second? All right. Any comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Hey, before we move on, can... Madam Mayor, can I just ask you one question?
Certainly.
When are we going to talk about infrastructure?
We are bringing one or two commission items from a prior meeting at each meeting, so I don't know where it is on the list. It might be next meeting, or the meeting after, depending on the amount of items on the agenda. So we're trying to make room to discuss each one, not everything all at once, because we're certainly not going to come back as stage three all at once, and trying not to go till midnight. So we've got a list.
And we do have discussions, you know, to talk about which items those are going to be, and which ones are the next ones on the list.
Yep.
You know, for instance, we didn't do the resident survey one meeting, because we knew Commissioner Higginson wasn't going to be here, and it was his topic.
Yeah, well, we had it, and we didn't address it since you weren't here last meeting. So yes, it's coming up. All right. Remove from consent agenda, non-communications. We have several letters about the community and senior center, one about the Memorial Day service. We have a communication regarding the Woodward corridor plan, and I want to point out that there is a meeting at... From MDOT, at Baldwin Public Library, June 12th, which is Wednesday, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, where they are taking comments on the entirety of the Woodward corridor plan, not just the Birmingham section. They're having one meeting in...
Yeah, I think it's Thursday.
Thursday, not Wednesday.
Excuse me. Thursday, June... Yes, Thursday, June 12th. One meeting in Birmingham, and then there'll be a meeting June 17th in Detroit. So anyone can come and give comments on the meeting. This is not to address noise issues, which was... I attended the meeting that Representative Price had it at the Baldwin Library, as did Commissioner Baller, and heard what progress they're trying to make on that. But it is an opportunity for citizens of Birmingham to stand up and say, "This is what we want for Woodward. We want it to be more pedestrian-friendly. We want what was proposed in our road diet submission," and to just advocate for a more pedestrian focus than MDOT currently has, which seems to be more about moving metal than about quality-of-life issues, or pedestrian safety, or the fact that it bisects our community. So again, we encourage any residents who have any thoughts to attend this meeting at Baldwin Library, and to speak out from open house from 3:00 to 6:00.
As representatives of the people, I think we have a responsibility to be there. Because as much as I love and respect my constituents, I don't expect them to turn out in force with the passion and knowledge that we seven have, and you, and Nick Dupuy. I think... I hope you're planning to go.
Absolutely. In the last open house they had, I went and attended, as did the... Nick's gone. The entire planning staff, and I believe some of the engineering staff as well.
Good. They, by the way, advertised a survey of some sort, which is impossible to access.
Yes.
Very frustrating.
Oh. The only one I managed to find was the HOV lane one, but that wasn't MDOT, was it?
No, I think it was MDOT.
Okay. I know I did that one, but I couldn't find another one.
Yeah, I think there was a survey, but it's not open anymore, because you have to have a...
Be able to log in.
Log in to get to it, so...
Well, that was a useful...
And yes. And we asked about that at the meeting that Representative Price hosted, with Chief Gooey, who did an excellent job, if I may say. He was very informative, very knowledgeable, and very patient with a room full of, moderately full of, very passionate, very distressed individuals, primarily from Royal Oak, more there than here. But he was very patient and did a great job of explaining what the issues with the noise ordinance are. And...
May I?
Yes.
I spoke with a couple of the people afterward, and my impression is that, you know, we're doing our best, but if they think we're going to solve the problem, they're probably wrong. That they need to do some things, and I suggested a few things, some of them quasi-legal. You know? Because, you know, I don't think we're... Nah. I was out there on Saturday night, and I went up and down twice. Up, down, up, down. And it was the fourth leg where I saw police cars. They were quiet and not lit up, and they were probably going to pull people over. This was at 10:00. Mayor long knows, because I called her. At first, I was like, "Where are the cops?" And then I saw them, but I didn't see their lights go. So the thought about that is, and I hope this isn't inappropriate to bring it up right now, but it's only 10:15. You know, it's an enforcement thing, but it's also like a publicity, public relations scaram thing, right? Like, for a while, we had a big sign. I think we still might have a sign, but it's not hugely apparent. It says, "Traffic Enforcement Zone." But somebody wrote a letter recently that said, you know, "We need decoy cars out there with their lights flashing the whole freaking night," you know, from whatever time they start till... I fell asleep in my chair the other night, woke up, it was close to 2:00 in the morning, and I could hear them. I can't imagine these people who have to live near that.
I do.
So...
Three or four streets up.
So as much as I say we're doing our best, I think we can do more with that. I think we need red and blue flashing lights all night long, and signs that say, "We're going to get you. Don't even think." I mean, literally, "Don't even think about it in this town, and we'll come after you." And I appreciate that a year or so ago, you told the police, "Go ahead and write the tickets," because for a while, they weren't even writing the tickets, because they couldn't enforce them. You said, "Go ahead and write the tickets." I think you ought to tell them to go ahead and do a few other things that, you know...
Madam Mayor?
So that's...
Yeah.
I was in one of those cars for five hours Saturday night.
Tell us.
You know, we were out there, and a lot of tickets were written.
So you hear a... Do you mind if we have a brief cut? You guys probably want to understand this, right? From his point of view.
Well, you're not... You're going to ask him... You're going to ask a question on behalf of the board? You're not going to have an independent conversation?
No. My question would be, "Give us a five-minute overview of what it..."
So technically, we move to Commissioner Reports.
You know, actually, that's a good segue, if you want to just call it a Commissioner Report.
It is a... Okay. So Commissioner House, would you like to make a Commissioner Report?
Okay. You know, normally, thanks to the grant we get from Oakland County for overtime, we can have six cars out there. We did not, because someone was sick, and someone was filling in, and we had four cars. Okay? So in a sense, we were understaffed. Now, the southbound traffic, thanks to the construction at 14 Mile to 13 Mile, I think that eliminated some of the problems Saturday night. We handed out... My police car handed out a few noise tickets, but there were quite a few other ones. And the joy of giving those tickets is, it doesn't cost you any points, it only costs you $130. So people are a lot nicer taking the ticket, knowing that they don't get points. And then we had a domestic issue over, almost in Troy, that took two cars at 11:00, 11:00 PM. And I don't think you want me to go into it, other than it was handled beautifully, and three neighborhood teenage boys really did the community a great service, helping a person that was under duress over there. Now, that meant, for possibly an hour, there were only two cars out on Woodward. And, you know, each one has a quadrant. The four have the quadrants, you know, to go both sides. And to my knowledge, nobody had any issue in the neighborhoods during the five hours, other than this mental health issue.
And I will note that, following the discussion about this issue on Nextdoor, it seems like the actions we've taken here in Birmingham, led by the city manager and Commander Gooey, to have those policing agreements with the owners of the private parking lots, and putting in the new short-limit parking restrictions that we introduced in April, are having an effect, because the problem is now better for us than it was, but it is much worse south of 13 Mile, and now they're now complaining north of us in the township. So that the problem didn't go away, it got squeezed south, and it got squeezed north, because we're doing a better job of controlling our environment.
That is an excellent observation, because, you know, it really picks up south of 14 Mile, and north is a big beaver.
Yep.
It does. And you can see people congregating in those parking areas, so that becomes an audience for people to show up.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, Royal Oak took an action, I think, last weekend to, you know, impose some control on that Jeep parking lot, which they hadn't done previously, because it became such an issue. They showed up over there and shut it down.
Oh, that's a public parking lot next to the dealership, yeah.
Right. They went over there and shut it down, yep, because of that. But so I think we're doing what we can, we're doing as well as we can, and we are... We just have to keep hammering at it. And the suggestions about lights and policing, and continuing to work with Representative Price, and continuing to tell MDOT our concerns, you know. So thank you for your Commissioner Report. Commissioner House, do we have any other Commissioner Reports?
No, I have another one.
Oh, okay.
And you remember when City Manager Marcus said, "You should honor community citizens that make Birmingham a special place." You shouldn't be honoring the hired staff, the personnel, which is more or less how we've been doing this. Well, the Pat Andrews Foundation, which is a legitimate 501(c)(3), is going forward. But I just wanted to mention, she was one of our historians, and we had two others that were eminent, and that was Harland Smith and Max Horton. Now, we haven't... Nobody's ever thought to do something for these gentlemen, whereas Pat was a teacher and... Pat was a teacher and impacted all of the people that are probably in their 50s here. You know, she taught them in first grade. Anyway, I'm delighted to tell you, we started Thursday, we start doing the reading library on Fairfax, you know, next to Chesterfield Fire Station 2. So, and thank you.
All right. Wonderful news. Commissioner Hague?
I don't know if it would fall under report or comment, but I'd like to talk a little bit about the fair.
Probably comment. Commissioner Comment. So do we have any other commissioner reports? Seeing none, we'll move to commissioner of comments. Commissioner Hague?
Okay. The only reason I asked report or comment was because I went out there on Saturday to just go and see what was going on after we heard of everything. Took my family out there during the day. It was to be expected with family during the day. But I wanted to get a feel for what was going on in the evening, so just kind of quietly walked around, had a chat with a number of the police officers there, and they were all very careful, all in very good moods, and saw some of the interactions, including, there was one when I was chatting to some officers, one kid turned up and wanted to start filming everyone for content, and the officers were very polite and very kind and declining, saying, "Thank you very much," but no, kid moved on. The plan that was executed in the evening, it was, it was an interesting crowd. I wasn't the only person out there that was watching what was going on. I bumped into one or two other people who can have influence within the community. And I would say that the plan that was executed, that was generated based off Friday night's learnings, was executed extremely well. I didn't see any problems with it. The only thing I would really say is, they need louder loud hailers, because the ones they had weren't very powerful, and it was a little bit difficult for everyone to hear when they were asking everybody to disperse and move out south of the park and not go north. So overall, I think there was an extremely good job done. I was very impressed with how carefully everything was managed. There were some clear opportunities for flashpoints, shall we say, that were quite visible, and they were handled very well. And so I think they did a great job. I think it helped make it a success, given the issues on Friday. And I would like to see, I would like to see the fair continue. Now, we've had emails saying, people saying, "Oh, no, that's enough, cut it out." I think we do need to have a smart conversation well in advance of the next one, because I did chat about a couple of ideas with some of the officers about how we could manage it better in the future. Things that I've seen in the past were fenced-off areas with two points of entry and exit that were fee-based, just to get through the gate. And I actually chatted with some parents at one of my kids' schools. There are three fathers there that work for three different police departments around Oakland County. And one of them works in Dearborn, and he said, "As soon as you charge entry, most of your trouble goes away." That's their experience that he's seen as well. So perhaps we could look at something like this to help continue being one of the few locations that can still hold a fair and hold it successfully and safely by doing some serious planning ahead of time, because it would be a shame to see it go. A lot of people look forward to it, and it's just the few elements that make it a bad event, which have caused other municipalities to have the problem. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that did try very, very hard to make it a good event, to make it a safe event, and for the very level-handed handling of potentially inflammatory groups.
I agree with you completely. I think that when we discussed cutting the hours back last year, the point of concern we had is what happens when the fair lets out. And I've had a few discussions with residents that said, you know, reflexively, "We should get rid of it," or, and when you talk about what it accomplishes and that it's an important event for families and children, that they get it. And when they say, "Well, what about if you close it at 5:00 p.m.?" Well, if you do that, you're not going to get vendors. And so, but I think, and I think we can be proud that there were no Birmingham kids involved this year. BYA and the schools said that they were going to address it, and hopefully they did, but, and the Saturday learnings were great. Now we need to apply them to Friday and make a couple other, perhaps, as you say, design choices. But I think it's, it's worth giving it another shot, in my opinion, and investigating what we can do to make it even better. Because it's, it's sad when the response to everything is just, "Close it down," because there is a community cost to that. There is a, a cost to optimism, a cost to belongingness, a cost to the community.
Vision.
For just, yes, to just say, "No more, no more, no more. We let the outsiders win." So--
So I would like to see us have some smarter conversations based off wisdom that we've learned this year. I don't know if we could have applied them earlier, but this year, there's definitely some learning. I would love to see some proposals come in from the police department and as well from the, from the chamber as well, because I did see Joe Baumann out there a little bit later as well, just kind of watching what was happening. So I think there are a number of us who are concerned and wanted to get our personal feel. And we should give it a go, we should try something different, we should apply lessons learned. Probably will not look exactly the same, but I think we should try and have that event because as an event, it is clearly a magnet, it is clearly successful. And I want to continue with that as much as we can within safe boundaries.
I just had one comment. I have a commissioner comment as well, but just on that topic. I did drive around town both Friday and Saturday. I think it was success. I commend the police. Every corner that I went to, at least one of the quadrants of that corner, pick a corner in Birmingham, there was at least one, if not two, officers on that corner. Of every corner I drove around the fair, not in the fair, drove around the fair. And that fight that happened at Spycelon 6, the video tells the story. Within probably 15 to 20 seconds, you had what looked like a reserve officer on the radio with three other officers there, probably within about six to seven seconds, which, you know, look, you can police, but a fight can happen with a police officer standing right next to people. If people want to fight, they're going to fight. But what they have to understand is that they're there, they were there quickly, and they should be commended for that. And that's not coming out in some of these, some of these, some of these newspaper reports and what have you. The video tells the story with regard to that, and that was one of the major fights, or the major fight, if you will. So I don't subscribe to people who just say, "Shut it down," or what have you. I think it was a tremendous, tremendous success, and I think that if people are going to fight, they're going to know that when they, when they come here, they're going to be arrested, they're going to be charged, and I think it's up to the city attorney and the city to prosecute those people, no deals. You want to send a message to people on Woodward about noise? We need to send a message to people that we want everybody to come, and they are welcome. But if they come here and they want to fight, they're going to be arrested, they're going to be put in jail, and they're going to be prosecuted. And when that happens, when that gets out, that we prosecute them with no deals, you're going to start seeing even a more decline. But I think that the police should be commended. I think it was a success. My second comment is, I don't know, I'm assuming the city of Birmingham does the plantings in the middle of Woodward, or is that MDOT? Who's responsible for those plantings?
Well, the Michigan Department of Transportation is responsible for the corridor as a whole. We did have approximately 20 some odd years ago, a plan to, that was done by consultants to beautify the area, especially within, I think it was brown to oak, maybe?
Okay, cool.
And so we did get special permits from MDOT to do that and to allow additional plantings and to put irrigation in and so on. And so we do primarily maintain those garden areas, as well as provide supplemental lawn cutting services, because what the state gives us for cutting lawns is not enough.
So, absolutely beautiful. My concern is, is the turnaround just south of Maple. The last turnaround has grasses growing, and those grasses get longer as the summer goes along, and they're getting to the point now, if you're in a sedan or a car that's not an SUV, you can't see. I do, I do that turnaround almost every day, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. I don't know if they can take out, but there's a little bit of a hill there when you're sitting there and you're looking up Woodward, and even, even without that blocking your view, cars are coming up in that left-hand lane, the first lane you're going to encounter when you, when you do the turn, when the Michigan turn, and they come on, up on you fast. You add in the fact that these grasses, by August, you will not be able to see over them in a regular sedan, and we're going to have an accident. So I just wanted to mention that. It's, I was going to mention it numerous times even last year and didn't, but, because it is beautiful. But I think that maybe there could be a section that's removed and maybe lower plants put, so you have the people--
For the vision clearance triangle.
For the vision clearance, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, go out and take a look at it and take your own view of it, but it's dangerous.
There's rules and standards on that, too. You could ask Julie if you don't know.
Oh, there absolutely are. Depend, if it's within 10 feet of the curb, there's height restrictions and then, you know--
Yeah. They grow, they're beautiful, but they grow pretty tall.
There are definitely standards.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comment? Commissioner Host?
I just want to piggyback on the fair. I hope we have some time to work with the chamber to try to find some resolution to keep it going. But my, my thing is, two months ago, we were dealing with speed remediation specifically on Arlington and Shirley, and we actually asked Nick and the staff to find out what Arlington, Shirley people are interested in. We will, we will hear from them and, within a week or two, you know, from the citizens. But now to my specific, and this is actually a show and tell, because I was at the farmer's market yesterday. An eight-year-old who lives at 421 Arlington came up to me and he said, "Mr. Host, here's how they go by my house. You need to put a stop sign at the three-way stop." And I thought, "We're not paying this kid enough." And that's it.
All right. Any other commissioner comments? All right. Advisory boards, committees, commissioner reports and agendas, legislation, city staff, motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.